Yes, some educational support would be second is executive affairs will go forward.
Okay. So executive affairs moves to four and education support comes to two. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Okay, because that has implications for how I'm set up. So I'm letting staff know now they're all they're all set. When you're ready to go, Ms. Woods, let me know. And I do have some preparatory remarks for finance and ops.
The only thing I just want to mention, I mentioned it, I mentioned in email. The public are likely tuned in to get an update on reopening. And I wondered if we should reconsider having that go at the very end of the night and move it up to the beginning or closer to the beginning.
Well, here's colleagues, we had it in an order that that we worked very hard on, you know, to be sensitive to those issues. My understanding through Dr. Brown, who won't be with us tonight, was that Mr. Hurd had asked for some accommodation because he has guest speakers that will be presenting. And, you know, predominantly they're they're here or waiting on standby. So I'll we'll do whatever the board wants to do tonight. But what I can tell you is that the finance and ops piece is extraordinary and important. It should not be last as it typically is when everybody is a bit weary. And then the reopening and the federal stimulus topics are also extraordinarily important. So all I ask is that when we get to them, that everybody be fully engaged and and focused. In terms of the order, I'll let there be a board decision.
Well, I know the community has read a lot of press about the financial aid, state aid, the American Rescue Act. So I'm not relinquishing finance and ops from from being anything other than the starting point. That that is what I feel the community is definitely asking about. That's what's been in the press. So I would like to start with finance and ops, put an update on the adopted state budget and the budget process. And I believe Jeff Pritchard and yourself are prepared to present that.
We are. But keep in mind, Ms. Woods, that the federal stimulus issue that you alluded to is not part of finance and ops. That is part of executive affairs tonight. So we have a we have a detailed presentation on all of that. But it's gonna have it right now. You're talking about putting it forth. You understand?
I think we need to consider our guests under educational support as well.
Larry did pose a good question. I didn't read the email, though, but maybe if you want to go ahead and present the reopening of the schools before education support.
That's the third high, high impact, high leverage issue is the reopening of schools. See, that's the adopted state budget. That's a separate focused issue on your processes aboard for adopting the 2122 budget and where we are with the state adopted budget at this point. The next big high impact issue is the use of federal stimulus dollars. That funding is imminent. And what's the process going to be in order to consider that those important strategic investments? And we have a four part presentation around that issue, including the nature of public engagement, which is important part of that process. Then the third high leverage piece is reopening of phase three and phase four, which for Buffalo Public Schools tonight is going to be basically inviting all of the students back. We have now invited all of the students back. And what you're going to hear is an update on how many of those students pre K through 12 have accepted our invitation at this point and are expected to be back in two parts, high school, April 26, and the rest of the elementary students on May 10. So that's that part under executive affairs, you see. Then student achievement is fairly straightforward. That doesn't need to be a long presentation, but it's an important one that Dr. Evans Brown asked about, which was what is the update and the expectation on our traditional New York State high stakes assessments for grades three through eight, elementary in math, ELA in math, and then for our regions exams. And it's something that Dr. Evans Brown thought would be important for the public and parents and everyone to know exactly what the case is for Buffalo Public, parents and children, because it's different this year, very different this year. So while that's not a long piece, we probably can get through that in 20 minutes. That also is important, but it's a standalone. It's a standalone. And then the last two under education support, which we're talking about deciding whether to move up. The youth risk behavior survey from two years ago, it's not current, it's from two years ago. The gentleman who put that information together is here to go through a slide deck on that. He's here, is my understanding. And then, of course, our colleague, Dr. Kenneth Maker from Madai College. Mr. Hurd had invited to come and make a presentation about some of the programs and work that they're doing at Madai. And he's here or will be here. So that's what you're that's what you've got to address. And like I said, it's all important. It's 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 all significant tonight. You have to decide what order that you want to do it.
Let's let's not confuse it. And let's go in the order of importance. I can call the president of Madai College and tell them that we'll be set off a little bit. I don't want to. I don't want to cause waves here. And
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
So you can hear me down there?
We can hear you here.
We can hear you, Sharon.
You're going in and out.
In and out.
Okay.
What what you could do, Terrence, whenever I've had guest speakers, if you just kind of alert them to an approximate time, like I think about two hours from now would be a good time for them to come back on. And I think that we'll be very close to taking them. And if it's a little if it's a little sooner, we'll let you know. And then you can say we're about 20 minutes away. And they can still come on. So right now, I would say ask them to be ready around seven, 7:15. And if that's possible for their schedule, then that that will probably work out better for everyone.
Okay, thank you. If you can form Dr. John Williams also.
Yeah, Tanja, Tanja's here. She's here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so let's be clear. When the agenda is set, we have to move forward with the agenda. That's in the policy guidelines. Okay, that's how the policy was adapted. Okay. And so in order to make a change, okay, the change should have been made 48 hours before the meeting started. And so we're in the meeting now. So can we can we move forward with the proposed agenda that was sent out? And in the future, we can make changes accordingly. But it's important for us to have a decorum and order of business and we move it forward. Okay, thank you.
So are we live?
Yeah.
Are we live?
Yes, we're live, Paula.
Sharon, the agenda, they come out to 48 hours ago, and I was advised yesterday on my Dr. Brown Hall to reach out to another board member about proceeding. That was the only confusion here.
We're moving forward. Keep it moving.
Good evening. Welcome to the Buffalo Board of Education Work Sessions dated Wednesday, April 14. This is the Finance and Operations Committee. Our discussion today is on the adopted state budget and an update on the Buffalo Public Schools budget process. Dr. Cash and our CFO, Jeffrey Pritchard is here. Cash, I give you the floor.
Okay, colleagues, good evening. Thank you so much. I want to really start the evening by publicly thanking our extraordinary Western New York delegation of legislators. Colleagues, I have prepared an individual letter with a handwritten note that will go out by mail and by email after this meeting. I've shared a copy of the letter for our esteemed Majority Leader, Crystal People Stokes. So you can see how I've chosen to thank thank this delegation. You can review that at your leisure. But let me just say that I have been in this work for so long, I can't even remember, but over 45 years. And the advocacy for Buffalo by our Western New York delegation led by the Honorable Crystal People Stokes has absolutely been extraordinary. Been off the chart. I've never seen it, never seen it. Senator Tim Kennedy, Sean Ryan, William Conrad, Crystal People Stokes, Patrick Burke, and Jonathan Rivera. Those are our Western New York legislators. And the increase in resources for our children in this budget to try to restore foundation aid to levels that you know we need, particularly in our urban districts. It will have a generational impact on the work of this district. They now achieve something that we'll be forever grateful. And while there are still many unknowns about how the COVID-19 crisis will affect Buffalo children and families in the short and long term, because of each member of this extraordinary delegation, we are in a strong as position as ever to leverage these dollars for the direct services, support, and growth academically and in all the other domain of our students. And and we will absolutely fully recover from this pandemic. And more importantly, as I've indicated, we will not let any need of our children go unremedied and unaddressed. We're going to address it head on, fully and systematically. Systematically is key here. And I'll talk more about that later. But again, thank you, Crystal. Thank you, William. Thank you, Timothy, Sean, Patrick, and Jonathan. You have done so much for the children and families in Buffalo. And you have the heartfelt gratitude of tens of thousands of us. Thank you. And colleagues, I would just encourage you for the public record. I wasn't able to get in touch with Sharon today. I was busy. I know she was busy. But I certainly would encourage Sharon you to start and maybe other board members say so publicly to these colleagues, because I've never seen anything like this, never. And you'll hear from Jeff what it really means. I mean, we're talking about a $78 million for one year for us, 98, almost $100 million over three years in foundation aid. I'm not even talking about the stimulus. I'm talking about foundation aid. And just a few short months ago, we were looking at a much more dire situation. We thought we would be having to climb out of an extraordinary fiscal deficit. So I can't, we can't, I I I'm just beside myself and have no more words. But Sharon, I turn the table over to you, President Kotman.
Dr. Cash, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me now? Okay, thank you. I I we would be remiss if we did not, in addition to the people you mentioned, give a shout out to Alliance for Quality of Education. In addition to that, our teachers' union, as well as the statewide teachers' union has advocated for the foundation aid for as long as I can remember. And I was pleased to be in a meeting that they had so padding themselves on the back and giving each other shouts out for the work that they'd done. In addition to that, there were other people who also played a part. We had the Jennifer Jennifer from the Big Five also was a part of that. In addition to that, we would be remiss not to even mention the Board of Regents. Our Board of Regents, Dr. Catherine Collins, as well as our Commissioner, Betty Rosa, who also was the former chancellor of our the Board of Regents. These people have consistently for at least the 10 years that I've been on the board have fought to get this money brought. And I want to make sure that we recognize them. We also mentioned, did not mention Senator Jill Brant. She has also been a supporter of ours as well. Higgins, our councilman. All of our elected representatives, for the most part, who have been consistent with pushing Buffalo Buffalo Public Schools forward has has really played a huge part in this, and we're grateful to them. And I have no problem reaching out to each and every one of them. I've already spoken to several, believe it or not, who called in regards to the charter situation and offered encouragement. And I was pleased to see that Buffalo is standing up and moving forward in certain directions. So I just want to make sure that if we missed anyone, charge it, as they say in the church, charge it to the brain, not to the heart. Okay? And I want to thank them all for everything that they're doing. And I want to assure AQE that we want to hear what your recommendations are. Since you work so hard, you're clear to say that you want to have a voice in in how this money is spent. But I do want to just say one thing here. I have been attending quite a few, quite few quite, I've been attending an awful lot of meetings lately on a national basis. And for real, the conversation is, we will not program our way out of the urban problems that we have without putting together some source of economic deliverance for people. And that means that we really need to beef up our efforts in the CTE. But Dr. Cash, this is a one in a lifetime opportunity. And I'm looking forward to hearing what your presentations are today. But I certainly would like to make sure that this money is kept separate as far as how it's reported out, so that we can make sure that we can go back and we can show how this money was spent in each one of these buckets. That's what my concern is. Thank you so much.
And I'm looking forward to hearing what your colleagues, we may need to turn and mute when others are speaking. That way we won't have the the feedback. All right, President Kotman, we appreciate that. Any other board members like to say anything at this point? I think it's, like you say, a once in a lifetime moment. So certainly board members, I think.
I believe, let's see, Jim McCosy has her hand up. Ann Rivera, Jim McCosy, then Ann Rivera.
Board Member Woods, thank you. So I I have been fighting well before I became a board member for this money with AQE, with Citizen Action, with different organizations. And I'd really like to make a shout out to just the community members in Western New York and in Buffalo. At one point, we traveled, we've we traveled to Albany all the time to try and fight for money. But we've been nationally recognized because we had, you know, folks who actually rode their bikes and traveled to different cities and different, you know, different districts to see how much they were owed in the CFE money. And they rode their bikes from Buffalo, New York to Albany in order to try and get this money. It was a monumental action. It thousands of people. And this is what we were doing, you know, the folks that you have the folks on the front lines that are elected officials, and then you have the folks who backed them up and their constituents. So this is definitely a a huge win for everyone. And I'm just, I'm so excited to see what we can do about it. I'm I'm I just I'm like Dr. Cash, I'm beyond words. So congratulations to Western New York, City of Buffalo, and everyone who had a part in doing this. Thank you so much.
Ann Rivera?
My thanks is simple and heartfelt. Our scholars are high stakes, extremely important, resilient, and deserve the support that they're receiving. And I appreciate everyone's, all the people named here, investment in education.
Okay, let's see, Terrence Hurd, then Larry Scott.
I just want to say, I don't want to iterate everything that was just just said or just repeat. But thank you from the bottom of my heart. And thank you for recognizing the needs for our children in our district. There's so many different things that we can do to help improve education and reimagine education. And I'm glad that we got a board and a district that's willing to work together to to look at every need that we have and improvements that we need throughout our district from school to school, from child to child, family to family, and the work that you that you're doing. I'm just grateful, you know, that we can address these needs that's in our district. Thank you again.
Larry Scott, and then I believe we have Lou, you, I believe your hand's up too. Okay, Larry.
Yeah, I just want to echo all the accolades for our local representatives. All the names have been mentioned already. They are absolutely tireless advocates for public education and for our kids and for Buffalo. I just want to add a few people, our parents, our Buffalo parents. Along with what Jen McCosy mentioned, we have parents that have been supporters of Buffalo Public Schools and advocating for more funding that can be directed to our kids and to the classrooms. And then two people I want to recognize as well. President Kotman mentioned Jennifer Pyle from the Conference of Big Five. Some of us participated in advocacy meetings. One of those was with the Shelley Mayor, Chair of the Senate for Education Committee in the Senate. And it was just a delightful meeting that we had. I truly felt like she understood the needs of public education and what we needed more of in urban public education, as well as a meeting with the Chair of the Assembly Education Committee, Michael Benedetto. Same thing where I felt truly that he understood the needs and concerns that we had as elected officials, as as educators for public education and for our kids. So those two people I just want to give a shout out to as well. Thank you.
Lou?
Thank you very much, Chairman Woods. Yeah, I I just want to say thank you to everyone who has played a part in these critical and vital dollars that the board will put to a good use to improve the educational lives of the students in the city of Buffalo. Thank you very much.
Okay, I I just want to say that we have been given the funding and a great victory from the on the state level and the federal level to reimagine education, to take it to new heights. And I'm just so proud of our delegation, congressmen, our elected officials, our parents, and all the organizations that advocated for us. We will not let you down. It's a new day. Dr. Cash? Dr. Cash, you're muted.
Thank you, colleagues. Well stated. I knew you you would do that. And it's really important to publicly acknowledge all of the people that you acknowledged tonight. Thank you for that. Now, our CFO, Mr. Jeff Pritchard, will just in two slides share the adopted state budget update and sort of what remains for us in the weeks ahead, so that we have an adopted Buffalo Public School budget. Mr. Pritchard.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, and good evening, board members. Admir, can you please put up the the slide presentation?
Colleagues, I've sent you all these presentations, so you should have them as well.
And there it is. While we're waiting for that, you know, I've, we've started to today and through last week, but several of the organizations that do analysis of the state budget, you know, they've started to provide information. And, you know, the some of what we're hearing is basically unprecedented. That's how they would describe the state budget with respect to aid to school districts. Complete 180 degree turn. This is a very quick turnaround from where we were a couple of months ago, where potentially significant reductions in aid were being looked at. Now we're seeing unprecedented increases. And we will get to, I will get to some of the federal aid, because that's obviously the the largest component of our increases. But that's not part of the, that's not going to be part of our general fund budget. So if we can go to the next slide, I'll go over essentially the state aid dollars as we understand them. And because we've we've talked about this for a few months now, the different components of state aid. And I have a table on there that describes some of the components of state aid, foundation aid, expense based aids, health services, charter supplemental tuition reimbursement, what was possibly going to be a reduction called local, local district funding adjustment, and then overall state aid. So and then I have three columns on there showing the governor's proposed budget, our legislative request, which was from March, and then the adopted state budget, which is just from last week. So foundation aid is really the biggest increase that we have now. We had requested a $90 million increase over three years. And the reason for looking at it over three years is that we know now that we have federal aid that will be very supplemental to the district for about three years. But what happens when that, when we reach that cliff, cliff and that funding goes away? So our legislative request was structured around trying to fully fund foundation aid, and 90 million was our ask over three years. The adopted state budget includes 98 million over three years and 43 million in this year. Now, one of the, what's very interesting about this is that foundation aid in the actual budget legislation is slated to be fully funded over three years. And this is, this has never happened since foundation aid started. So the legislature and the governor, they made a commitment in in the adopted budget and in the legislation to fully fund foundation aid over three years. And that's what we've been asking for, advocacy groups have been asking for, and that's what, at this point, we're looking at. And 43 million is, it's a little less than half of it in in this upcoming year. That's 8%. Again, the these are unprecedented numbers, 8%. You know, 3% would be about the highest we've ever seen. This year, 8%. Expense based aids, governor had proposed to consolidate many of them, which would have resulted in about $20 million cut. That's rejected. Health Services Aid, we get a bullet aid from the legislature every year. That was proposed to be cut. We did ask for an increase. We do, we do not have that at this point, but we do have a restoration. Charter supplemental tuition reimbursement, that was going to be cut in half. We had asked for that to be restored and also paid in the same year the tuition's paid. At this point, we know that it is restored, that that proposed cut has been restored. Whether we can get that in the same year, that's still subject to potentially additional legislation. There was a local district funding adjustment, which was indeterminate. We didn't know what it would be, but it could be a substantial reduction in aid for for our district and other districts. That was rejected. So all of these are very, very positive. Overall state aid, and I have that in green at the bottom here, 72 million. and I have that in green at the bottom here, $72 million increase in state aid or 9.8%. Again, we've never seen anything like this. Nine, almost 10%, that's, you know, that's, that's three years' worth of growth that we've generally, you know, that we've seen in the past. So this is, this is from where we were looking at significant reductions. Now we're looking at just the opposite. And again, this is state aid. I'm not talking about federal aid at this point. So it's, as far as we know, again, it's the highest aid increases that, in my memory, and certainly I don't think anyone's found or has identified a year where state aid increases have been any higher. Again, full foundation aid phase in. The pandemic adjustment, so $29.7 million cut we had in, in the 2021 budget, that was fully restored. That was offset by the first round of federal aid, the CARES Act. But again, that is fully restored in the 2122 budget. And there was a fear that that might be something that might take four or five years to restore. And, you know, we're still doing, you know, full analysis of legislation still needs to follow. Some of the charter school legislative requests and so forth. So there's still much to come. But again, this is, this is, you know, very substantial, the aid increases. And, you know, things will start moving very quickly now in our budget. You know, we, again, this is, this was a bit of a surprise last week, and certainly a welcome one. And now that we have this, that helps us, that's going to help us firm up our revenue numbers and also determine what we can do on the expenditure side. So if we can go to the next slide, I have an update of our four-year financial plan. So we're not ready to give a complete share out of the, of the state, of our budget, the 2122 general fund budget at this point. But one of the things that we have to do, and this is, this is required by legislation, we have to submit to the control board by the end of April, a four-year financial plan. So the four-year financial plan is a summary of our budget, and we've been doing it for several years now. And first bullet on here, the 2017-18 through 2021 plan, we've exceeded all of, you know, all the goals that were in there in terms of cost savings, revenue enhancements. We've exceeded all of that. That's, that's positive. I'll be sharing with you, I hope by Friday, the, that document, so you can see it. Next, next bullet on here, again, it's just reminding that we have to have this plan adopted by April. And so the April 21st board meeting is when we're targeting to provide the four-year, well, you'll have it prior to that, but we will ask the board to approve it. So it can still, so it can be submitted to the control board by the end of April. And again, this is, it's a legislatively required document. And it's, it's in full understanding that our budget is not complete. This, this essentially just includes a, where we are with our budget at this time. In this plan, we are including the full phase in of foundation aid. That is in the legislation at this point, and that's our best understanding and best guess as to what foundation aid will do over the next two years. Things can change, but it is in the legislation, and it has to be removed from the legislation for us to not receive those increases. The four-year plan, at this point, includes, in our draft, 2122 budget, I'm looking at about a 25 or 30 million dollar general fund deficit. And that is primarily due to transportation aid. So as you all know, transportation aid is paid in one year, reimbursed in the next. If you have a year with a very low, very low expenditure, which the last two years have been, the following year, you're going to have very low transportation aid. So that, that is artificially reducing our state revenues. And that's where I'm looking at roughly a 25 or 30 million dollar general fund deficit. That's down from the 90 million that I presented back in February. So this, that's, you know, 25 to 30 is very small compared to where we were. Notwithstanding the transportation aid shortfall, we have a plan that is structurally balanced in the following years. So and again, that's based on the, where we are with, with, you know, the same basic and conservative adjustments, projections that we've had. We're looking at having a structurally balanced plan, really for the first time since 2015-16. And that, again, that goes to the, to the idea of being unprecedented. You know, we conveyed and have been conveying in our legislative requests that, you know, to structurally balance the district based on our current spending level, we would need that full phase in of foundation aid, including that in the plan. We, it appears as though, at this point, we are structurally balanced. And again, this is the first time in years that that's happened. Now, last point on here that I want to make, so the federal stimulus aid, which is, is a little less than $300 million, that is going to be a grant fund expenditure. So that's not part of our four-year plan. It's not part of our general fund budget. It will have its own, its own budget. And we're going to follow, as we roll into the next, as we roll into the next presentation, we will discuss the federal stimulus. We, you know, we'll talk about that a little bit more. There also are, within, you know, the, the current, you know, with Biden and the Congress and Senate, education is a high priority item. It's very clear that that's the case. There are and probably will be additional, there may be additional stimulus amounts, specific to some of the federal grants that we receive currently. I don't have really any details on this, but things like the IDEA for Special Education, Title I, we should probably be expecting increases of those in the next, in the coming years. And again, the federal stimulus is, is not part of the general fund budget. It's not included in there. It's not included in our four-year plan. This is, is essentially supplemental funding that, that will follow. So that's, that's really the end of this presentation. I don't know if there's any questions on, on what we've gone over, or if we want to get right into the next set of slides where we discuss the federal aid. But I can certainly handle any questions at this point.
Board Member Woods, colleagues, I would like to make one important point that Jeff alluded to, but I wanted to be clear with you. And that is that the finance, four-year financial plan, Jeff is planning to get it to me. We've been talking about it for several weeks now. He's planning to get the full draft, advanced draft, to me tomorrow. I will review it thoroughly tomorrow, and we want to get it onto the board agenda for the April 21st meeting on Friday. So if we upload that on Friday, we trust that that will give you enough time to look at it, review it, and have questions for discussion on and at the board meeting. And then you can approve under the consent agenda if you so will, so desire. If you don't or aren't able to do that or reach agreement on that, then, then we'll have to schedule a separate board meeting before the end of April to get this done, because as Jeff said, it is a requirement by law that we get it done in April. Just wanted to make that, that point. Okay, Board Member Woods, I turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, it's in terms of working with our different schools on their school-based budgets and production of the Buffalo Public Schools Plan, where are you on that? And the only other question for Dr. Cash is, these, these extraordinary circumstances, we would like to have some public meetings, public input into what the community feels they need to address remediation for their, for their students. We'd like public input. So if you would kindly comment on your plan for public hearings and public input. So those are my two questions. Can you address those two?
Well, Jeff can address the first one. And then what I would respectfully request is that I have a whole slide on that in the next presentation that will answer all of that question, Ms. Woods, if you could hold until then.
That would be fine.
Okay, thank you. Jeffrey?
Yep. And so Paul, at the, the school-based budget process is, is, has been underway. Meetings are going on presently, so they started this week. I don't have any data on them, but, but that process has, has gone forward and is continuing, as are departments. You know, we're still trying to get budgets in. Understand, though, that the infusion of federal aid is likely going to change things. So, you know, we've, we've got many moving parts. And I think as we, in the coming weeks, and really coming couple of months, start to see what this infusion of federal aid will do, it's, it's going to be, you know, really, in large part, I think transformative to a, to a lot of things that we have done in the past. So I, I wish I could tell you exactly how that will look, because I don't think anyone knows at this point. I think when, when we really get into the planning for this stimulus aid, which we believe will address many of the things that have always been, you know, perhaps unaffordable in the past, that now are, it's going to change things. And, and, you know, we'll certainly speak to that as we, as we move forward.
Well, that's, that is exactly the point that I wanted to hear, because where we were previously with state withholding 20% of our funds and the directives that were sent requiring reductions because of the crisis we were facing, that is, as you said, we've done a 380 here. So I'm glad to hear and expecting that the directions being sent will be revised and we will have better news.
At this point, that's correct, Board Member Woods. I'll inject a few other cautionary notes in the presentation ahead, but at the 35,000-foot level, that is, that comment is correct.
Thank you. Does any other board members have any more questions on this part, Ms., Board President Kotman?
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jeff, quick question. The foundation aid originally had a list of student, a list of schools that were underfunded. Is that going to be taken into consideration when the budget is pulled together? I can remember about four schools that were underfunded over the years, based on, and that ultimately equaled those dollars. And I'm wondering if that's going to be taken into consideration. I'm still curious to know. That's one question. The second question is in regards to the state. Does the, the legislation allow for supplanting at all in this, in their formula? And then the third question is, rumor has it that the City of Buffalo is getting enough money and they can stop using ours. Is that a fact? To the best of your knowledge. Thank you.
Well, let me say, let me address the first one, Jeff. And then if you have other comments, you certainly can, can chime in. And then you take the second one fully. I think the answer is no on the supplant, always is in my, in my experience, but you can add to that one, Jeff. On the first one, Board President Kotman, there's been a transparency formula that the state has been working on for a couple of years now, and they continue to tinker with it. And in each year that they've done that, they've identified a group of schools. You're talking about a group of schools from probably a prior time. But since this governor formula has been laid over, we call it a transparency school allocation formula, determine which schools are overfunded based on the formula and which schools are underfunded. That's a different list than the ones you've been talking about. So bottom line is, all of it will be taken into consideration. And you'll see in our presentation that equity, access, quality, and opportunity will undergird everything we do when we consider these strategic investments. So all of that will be addressed, yes. Now Jeff, on the supplant question, what do you, what are your thoughts on that?
So the, this, the federal funding, which we'll talk about in a minute, is, is meant to be supplemental. So unlike the CARES Act, that was, that was a backfill of a cut of general fund dollars, these dollars are meant to be supplemental in nature. That's why they're, that's why they're, they're being separately identified as grants in our grant fund. I believe there are, there are, you know, there's, there's lists of what is and is not allowable. And to the extent that a school district would have to make cuts in their other funding, there would be some allowance for using federal funds to avoid reductions in existing programs. Our intent, and I think the numbers, as we see them currently bear this out, that these, these dollars really should be intended to be supplemental. Because they are, they are, it's a lot of dollars, and it's for a few years, but it, but it is something that will expire. So it has to be something that can, that can expire. It has to be funding that can go away and not, not leave us with a giant fiscal cliff. And again, we believe the, the foundation aid will go a long way, fully funding that will go a long way towards that. So that, that's on the question on the supplanting. The City of Buffalo, I have not had a chance to analyze what they have received under the various federal aid. You know, I understand that there, there, there is substantial stimulus funding for, obviously, schools, which we know in state, in local governments. I, but I can't speak to, to the city at this point.
Terrence Hurd has his hand up. President Kotman, does that answer your question? Okay, Terrence?
Okay, I have two quick questions. I'm not quite sure if they're premature or not. My first question is about the assessment tool that the principal used to, to classify, you know, what programs are needed inside each building. How will this be affected? Would the principal be allowed to work with the district and, and imagine board members to see what programs are needed inside the school, so they can have another voice and see how this can be utilized? And the second question is about our Capitol Building. I know we need some resources for improvements inside several buildings. And one that I visited recently was Westminster Charter School, which I'm not sure where we would be at right now as far as talks with that program over there. So those are my two questions.
Admir, before we answer questions, could you put down the slides? I don't think board members are alluding to the slides at this time that see each other's faces. So could you take down this presentation? Thank you. So let me answer this question. I mean, we have a process, Mr. Hurd, that's going to include all of our stakeholders, all of our stakeholders, including principals, teachers, support staff, parents, everybody. So short answer, I guess, is yes. But what you'll see in my presentation is that there's going to be a very disciplined, systematic, evidence-based approach that we're going to take in order to decide and determine which strategic investments we can sustain, that we have the capacity to do, and that have a number of other concerns and considerations that, that I believe, in my experience and research-based practice, need to be considered as we take them through these screens. This is not going to be a long wish list of what everybody wants to do, and then let's go do it. You're going to have to have some discipline on this, because it is short-term money. And you don't want to increase long-term legacy liability. So I'm going to help guide you through this and show you a framework that staff are working on now, that we will consider each and every suggestion, recommendation, proposal. recommendation, proposal, that we'll put that through to determine it's primarily whether it's gonna be a high priority, high impact strategy. So, so that's what, that's how I would answer that, on that question. Now, what was your second question?
About, about capital building. We know we need, we have buildings in our, in our district that needs improvement, improvements.
That particular, that particular school has a lot of money reserved for capital improvement. So we're gonna be trying to access those dollars first. And capital improvement is, is another whole issue. And we do have substantial dollars and a plan, at least a two-year plan, to begin to address capital improvements at this time. So I'd like to tap those aligned funds first as we go through this. Not sure, Jeff, you would know if there's a detail in the language that, that addresses capital funds with these dollars.
No, there, there are things that can be done that would be capital in nature relative to improvements to buildings to make them safer for the current environment that we're in. So, so that is, that, that, that is in there. There, there is, and this is months and months and months out, but there is actually an infrastructure plan that's going through Congress right now that may have funding for schools for capital improvements. And, and whether that be dollars or, or funding opportunities, that, that's another piece. The, the, the school building, which used to be School 68, if it returns to BPS would, would be, I believe, one of our aidable buildings for, for building improvement dollars, meaning we could get building aid. And, and Terrence, I'm glad you brought the question up too, because one of the things that, that I, I didn't include on any slides was that we are working on the, a refinancing of the joint schools' construction debt. And I, I hope to circulate a memo tomorrow from Citigroup that will discuss the $25.8 million savings that we think we will have. And dollars like those will be deployed into, into our building improvements. So, there, there's a host of things that I think will assist us on that, in that angle, in the coming weeks, months, years, that we're looking forward to.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard and Dr. Cash.
Thank you.
If there's no, is there any other questions on this part of finance and ops? Because I'd like to turn it over to Executive Affairs. Because the finance, the federal stimulus money is a very important area. So if this ends finance and ops and I turn it over to Executive Affairs, Vice President Lou Petrucci?
Thank you, Committee Chairman Woods. Welcome everyone to the meeting for the Buffalo Board of Education. Tonight, we have four different work sessions. Presently, we are going to go to the Executive Affairs, where we have two topics for discussion. The use of federal stimulus funding and the process. And then what I know many people are watching for, the Phase 3 and 4 of the reopening opportunities for hybrid and remote learning. At this point, I will turn it back over to Dr. Cash. Dr. Cash, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Lou, Board Member Petrucci. Colleagues, this deck of slides, we have six or seven slides in about four main parts that we wanna talk about. We wanna talk, in one slide, Jeff will give the overview of these stimulus dollars and the amounts and, and how they should be sort of directed. Then Will Karastis, I have put in as a lead to conduct community-wide, spread community engagement meetings as well as efforts to get feedback on a regular basis from our many constituencies, many constituencies. We wanna hear from their ideas, their thoughts, their concerns, their hopes, their dreams, so forth and so on. Very important part of this process is the engagement part. And we look forward to it. And then I will talk about some of the cautions and framework that I think we've already begun to scaffold, but I'm gonna share it with you so that you can share it with others that best practice recommends that you begin thinking about this in this way. This is not a simple issue of here comes the money, let's go spend it. This, 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 we'll get into a heap of trouble if we start processing it that way. So I wanna share with you my best thinking at this time about that. And then I'll finish just with, with another piece to consider. You know, in my, in my talks with my cabinet and my lessons that I've used to give in graduate school, I use a lot of ship analogies. You know, ships are safe and harbor, but that's not what ships are for. Another one is, you've gotta build the framework before you can launch the ship. You gotta build the thing to build the ship upon, and then you take the ship down and launch it. And what we have to do first, almost before anything else, is start to consider what kind of foundation and infrastructure, infrastructure do we need to develop and consider so that we can have a path to run on with these dollars? That is very important to consider, or in my experience, they fail. What happens is everybody has great ideas, but then they fail in the end because you didn't plan right on the front end, on the front end. So I'll say a few things about that. So, this is an exciting time, colleagues. Let me be clear about it. This is our time. This is our time. And I, I, I'm gonna be very clear. I'm old, getting near the end of my time, but I know as an educator, and if you are with me and you're educators as well, this is our time. We have lived and built our whole life toward a moment like this, toward a moment like this. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna be unequivocal about it. We're gonna seize the narrative, we're gonna seize the moment, and we're gonna lead this. Now, we're gonna have a lot of folk working with us and partnering with us and being beside us, but we're gonna lead it. Because we are imminently qualified to lead it. That's what we do. And I want you to be with me on that message. See? Listen, hear, take input, all of that. But we're leading this work in partnership with others. Because that's what we do, we're the experts. And we, we, we're gonna seize this moment, we're gonna get it done right. And Buffalo is gonna be right at the top of the nation and in pop, in the top of the world in how you do this work for children who need us. Period.
And Dr. Cash, speak on that.
All right. So, let me let Jeff start and then I'll come in when my part comes. And we'll, and we'll get all of this in this presentation. This is the presentation, when, when we're done, that, let's talk about it. Let's talk about it, all right? All right, Jeff, if you could start. Colleagues and Ed Merrick, put up the slides that say "use of federal stimulus funding colon process." All right? Jeffrey, you lead off. Will, you're on deck.
Okay, thank you, again. Ed Merrick, can you take it to the page two, please? Okay, so what I'm gonna go over here is, is I, you know, there's a lot of, there's been three big pieces of, of federal stimulus that, that we've seen now over the last year. And I wanna kinda set the frame for what we're looking at here. The first one, and I don't have, this isn't on the list, but the CARES Act is what was signed last March. That funding should expire and be used up through this current fiscal year that we're in. So that, that should be, you know, should not really, at least in any large portion, go forward. So what we have now are two additional, large pieces of federal stimulus aid to talk about. And, and I'm putting all these acronyms in here because you'll, sometimes you'll see, you'll, you'll see it shown one way or another. And I think it's kind of important for everyone to know what they are. So, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. And that's, it goes by the acronym C-R-R-S-A. That was signed into law in December of 2020. And this is an estimate at this point, but the funds allocated to the district are, they're estimated at about $88.8 million. So that's, that's the first one. Or this is actually the second one. So CARES Act, then the C-R-R-S-A Act. And now the next one is the American Rescue Plan of 2021, or ARP, or sometimes ARPA, A-R-P-A. That was signed into law in March of '21, so just last month. Funds allocated to the district are estimated to be $201 million. Those, the $88.8 million, $201 million, those are the numbers that were included on the state aid run that was released last week. The State Education Department has told us they're not final. They may not change significantly, but they're not, they're not final. But you get an idea of, of the size of these, these, these two programs. One big item that's in the ARP is that there is what's called a 20% learning loss set aside. So there are certain things that have been legislatively outlined as, as helping remedy learning loss. And that, in large part, that's things that are ELT, summer programs that are outside of the normal school year. It looks at a lot, a lot of those to be relative to learning loss. There's a set aside. There's also funds in both of these that will be retained by the state. And some of those funds may be, may be provided to us in other districts in the form of other grants. So, together, these funds are referred to as Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds, or ESR. So you'll see oftentimes ESR as, as the, the name of, of these. And, and in this case, ESR 2 and ESR 3. So the second, the, the C-R-R-S-A would be ESR 2 and ARP would be ESR 3. So there's been three, and ESR 1 would be the CARES Act. So, so that's, that's sort of the terminology that goes with these. Final allocations, guidance, and a grant application are to follow. So again, the, these, these are gonna be treated as a grant. They're not general fund dollars, they will not be part of our general fund budget. They will not be part of the general fund budget for the four-year plan. These are above and beyond in part of, part of our grants fund. The duration at this point looks to be going through about September of 2024. So you're looking at about three years. I, I've seen and heard in a few instances, four years. So, obviously, September '24 would bring us two months into a, or three months into a fourth year. So I don't know if there may be any adjustments with that. But this, this, there, it is a multi-year, but not unlimited duration. And the, this next bullet, because a lot of people have questions, what can go in it? And there, there are a lot of details that have been discussed at this point. And, you know, as part of the actual legislation, guidance will be received from the state and through the grant application process. But I did put a quote in here that I pulled off of one of the pieces of guidance that really, it, it talks about, you know, wide range of uses, but activities that are necessary to maintain the operation of and continuity of services in a, in a local education, educational agency and continuing, continuing to employ existing staff at the LEA. So what that really means is that if we're in a position where we have to lay off because there is no funding, that it appears some of this funding may be usable, if need be, to, to cover that. But again, in, in our initial projections, these, these dollars appear to be and, and should be looked at as supplemental dollars. Last point on here, so a process must be followed to develop a plan. And it, it really starts with community engagement. And the, the plan, there's actually a plan that we have to be able to post on our web by July 1st of 2021. So, you know, we're, 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 there's a relatively short period of time to get moving on this. And it begins with community engagement. And, and that touches on everything, community, schools, board, staff, everything. So, that really gives you the high level on the number side of it. So, on to the next slide, please.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, Dr. Cash and board members. So, the, the purpose-
Will, hold on.
Yeah.
Those were the nuts and bolts, colleagues, of the stimulus dollars. If you have any questions about that, sort of now's the time to ask. Because we do have a, a number of slides. But this, this, if you have questions on the nuts and bolts, I wondered if you did. Otherwise, we'll, we'll continue. Would your preference be to continue? Or if you have a hand up, we'll, we'll take the question.
I just wanted to say one thing. I did attend a presentation at noon from the New York State School Board Association. And they said that the, these funds, the ESR three-year funding, has very specific guidelines for what you can use it for. In, do, we, we having buildings for COVID addressing, but they have specific things that you will have to do an application showing that you're using the monies for these specific things. And they also mentioned this piece about it must have public engagement and 20% must be for rehabilitation remedial learning. So that's what the New York State Association of School Boards presented today at 12 o'clock.
Yes, and that, and that's correct, Board Member Woods, that's very helpful. We were gonna allude to that, but you, you covered that well, and so thank you. All right, Will, if you could take this slide, please.
Thank you, Superintendent. So the, the purpose of our public engagement strategy is to receive feedback from our district stakeholders and the general public on the potential uses of ESR funding, as it's stipulated in the federal and state guidance. We'd like to invite our District Committee of Stakeholders to three public livestreamed meetings. The first one being on Thursday, April 29th, beginning at 4:00. Tuesday, May 11th, beginning at 5:00. Thursday, May 20th, at 10:00. And each of the constituent groups from the committee will be asked to provide recommendations based on the federal and state guidance that I will be providing them. And I will copy the board, of course, and the cabinet on all that correspondence so you have the same documents that they're looking at. Half of each one of those meetings will be dedicated to a public chat during which members of the public will be able to submit their questions, their comments, and certainly their own recommendations. The general public will also be asked to use a portal on our website for email submissions. And again, we'll be asking them to base their recommendations on the specific federal and state guidance. And just a side note, that public chat opportunity and the email opportunity is going to be very important as we try to elevate student voice with this. So we will be making sure that we get the information out to our students so that they're aware of how they can participate in these meetings. And of course, Board of Education members will be encouraged to log in to the meetings, to participate. And then we'll be producing summary findings from all of the public engagement to Dr. Cash by May 24th.
Thank you, Will. And colleagues, this was just a high-level, short form of it all, but there'll be many opportunities for ongoing and continuous engagement. And we'll build those timelines, we'll build those calendars and the like. Do I see a hand before we continue? Lou, anyone? All right.
President Kotman, I see is waving at us. Sharon, do you have a, a question?
I have a question, and I think Jennifer's hand is also up. Board Member McCrusey's hand is also up.
All right.
So looking at these initial meetings, I don't see any weekend meetings involved in this. Are you planning on using the community-school form? Is this, is this a, I am concerned that we do not have any weekend meetings in here. My other question is, how are you going to notify the constituents that you're having these meetings? How are they, how is this going to be advertised? I'm looking at the time period, Tuesday, 5 to 7. Well, that works good if you don't work till 5:00. So I'm trying to figure out, are we making this, are we accommodating our- So I'm trying to figure out, are we making this, are we accommodating our constituents? I don't see, you know, 5:00, if a parent gets off at 5, getting their children home, getting them fed or whatever, are they really going to be able to participate in an evening meeting? So I'm, and I don't see any weekend meetings there at all. And my other question is, how are we going to notify our constituents? And how are, what is the communication plan in regards to this, these meetings? Thank you.
Yeah, so I think those are, those are good suggestions, good comments. Certainly, this is an initial approach to it. And what we could do is at the Thursday meeting, see if there are additional interest in some weekend meetings. We're happy to do that for weekends. Maybe we'd have the first one and then get get feedback on when when a good weekend meeting might occur versus building it in now. We could do that. I'm open. What do you think, Will?
No, I think that's a great idea. I'll put that question to the committee, actually, when I send them the first email about these dates, that if they have some other recommendations, just let me know.
Good.
So who makes up the committee? Who makes up the committee? I'm just curious to know who's on the committee.
The committee is made up of the all of the leaders of our various parent organizations and the leaders of our all of our professional organizations in the district. We also have Say Yes is also at the table on the committee.
So, Will, just for the public edification, say who, say who that is in terms of our professional organizations. B T F, B C S A, V A S, just name all the organizations.
P E C T A, B C S A for the administrators, P E C T A for our clerical, B T F for our teachers. So they are part of the committee. And then each one of the the parent organizations that are that sit on the parent congress.
B C S A?
Yes.
Well, I think I think all of them should be invited. I think B E S T should be invited. I think the custodians, the food service, everybody should be invited to these meetings, everybody.
Okay.
Leave no stone unturned. And then make sure that everybody has an opportunity to join if they don't make the meeting. They can join live stream, they can have a way of continuously sending information in electronically. And I've already directed Ms. Callow, who developed a communication plan for this, Ms. Kotman. So we'll be using multiple methods of communicating out, including translation of this information into the top six languages.
And I would like to see a survey also. I would like to also see our student representative be allowed to host a student forum. That young lady is capable of handling her own meetings and and certainly she can engage our students involved in this. I am concerned that our board is not spearheading at least one of these meetings, but since board members are going to be invited, I would like to see a board member put on the committee. I think that that that's essential, that part of this district committee of stakeholders includes a representative from the Buffalo Board of Education, the the board. And so I think we need to add that piece in there so that we can have direct, someone directly reporting back to the board on these situations on this. Okay?
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, all of that is duly noted, and we'll take care of it. Thank you for that.
Any other questions, President Kotman, before we turn the floor over to Ms. McCosie? Okay, Jennifer, do you have some questions? I can't see, I didn't see you raise your hand, but it was represented to me that you have a question.
Yes, I do. I think that President Kotman kind of addressed much of that. I also would like to know, are we asking for any of these groups or their constituents to make, you know, are we putting, not pressure, but are we asking them to be sure that they reach out to their bases to participate in this? Maybe even have meetings of their own? Everybody has a monthly meeting. You know, are they including this in their agenda with the poignant talking points and the, you seem to be very specific on what it is you're trying to address and you you have your 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 agenda down. Also, in regards to what President Kotman said, how can board members maybe take the same points and create their own forums via, you know, Zoom or or whatever? Just to, the buzz has to be real. And if we're going to do this in a major way, and you have board members who are literally voted in by all the people that we're trying to reach, how can we also take this on if we choose to, you know, maybe like a mock participatory budgeting issue with or scenario with our students or something along those lines? I mean, I would, I would definitely lean to you all as to how you would want for us to be able to go about receiving feedback based on what you have in store as far as what you're trying to communicate. But, you know, how can we as individuals also help out other than just directing people to come to one of these three meetings? I feel like this is a wildly positive opportunity that we don't, you know, instead of fighting for money, we actually get to see how money is going to be worked out. And, you know, the excitement should be real for this for this city. So I I'm down to host whatever, be a part of whatever, just, you know, echoing everything Sharon said and adding a little more.
Right. Your first point, Ms. McCosie, is really important. So committee members, as in the past with other projects that we have tackled in over the years, they are always asked to convene, if they can, with at least the leadership of their constituent group, or create some type of process for their organization to get feedback. And they'll certainly be asked to do that for this. That's going to be very important. I'll also be encouraging to distribute the documents that I send them, which is the summary state and federal guidance, to all of their membership so that, again, people can be focused on creating recommendations that align with that guidance from from the state and federal levels. And I think we're just open to suggestions on any way that the board members can participate. You know, I'll leave that to your discretion and certainly to the superintendents.
Yeah, colleagues, we support all of those ideas, but now remember, there's a structure and then there's a execution on that. So we want to hear from you as well on how and when and you want to get engaged. I mean, you can do your own community meetings. We'll help you stage those, organize those, have staff assigned to those. You could do a whole board event around this, where we do it in a public place, maybe in one of our schools, all of the board attends, and you invite everybody to come. Well, virtually, we do it. So let's talk about it. We'll send something out to you and let's get your feedback, and and we'll go, we'll go to work on it. I do think student voice is critical. We always have talked about it and done things lately with it. Work of Dr. Morell, for example, with her scholars, and that could be a forum for students to to give feedback. And I do think Tamisha Walker, our board rep, student rep, is capable, but with support, with support. I'd have some staff assigned to her if she wanted to do something with student forum. So all of this, we will take into consideration. I've already directed Dr. Williams and Dr. Reynolds to reach out to the parent leaders of the five major parent groups that we have and to get things start moving on to Facebook and into their into their populations of constituents and membership and so forth. So we're getting all of that, all of that rolling. All right, anything else at this time?
Mr. Hurd, do you have a question?
Yes, I just had one question. Due to the importance of this and the and the timing, I would like to see possibly that this district can reach out to the community newspapers so that more people can get involved because there's more people outside our parent groups and there's more people that that is not aware of the functions of the district and what goes on, you know, within our schools. So if we can reach out to our community newspapers, whether you live on North Side, East Side, West Side, South Buffalo, that this message will be brought out. And also, to make it simple, if it's possible, on our website, if there could be a link or so that that parents can actually ask questions and send to that link, and it could be observed by the board members and administrative staff members, because I know that it's going to be a lot of people trying to get on to the three meetings in the two hour timeframe. They may have a lot of questions that that we won't be able to answer or or might not be answered, you know, for them. So if there's something that a database can be compacted for questions, that they can go to that link and send their messages there.
Yeah, we'll look at, colleagues, I don't want you to think that this is all we're going to do with public engagement. This is a start. These are things that have come come to us to start the work, to start the engagement process, but this, look at this as fluid, look at this as organic, and that it'll have tributaries, that it have offshoots, and and we'll continue to engage the public around this. This is going to be a lot of work. It has a, it has a 10 year and longer impact is what our intent is. So we won't try to do it and stuff it all into one, one month of meetings. No, this will be, this will be ongoing, but this is a start. And your ideas and thoughts here have further stimulated our thinking in this regard. And I will be directing staff tomorrow to follow up on on many of these ideas.
And Mr. Hurd, just to follow up on your idea about it being just an ongoing, that is the purpose of the portal, for the public to be able to constantly submit questions, comments, or recommendations through the portal. I'm calling it an email, but it's basically a portal that will be live for several weeks. So that that opportunity, as you described, it will exist.
Thank you, Dr. Kresty.
Does the board have any other questions? All right, please continue, Mr. Krestis.
He's going to turn it over to me now. Thank you, Will. Admir, next slide, please. Colleagues, this is part three of this process. In many ways, this is the most important part of the process, and it reflects cumulative thinking of educators who are in work like this over many, many years. I'm calling it a process for identifying high priority, high leverage expenditures to improve pre K to 12 academic and social emotional learning, and also looking at the work from prenatal on into post-secondary options, good post-secondary options for our young people, strengthening that pipeline and that continuum all along. So here are some questions. There are six questions that we've called from our meetings with the Council of Great City Schools, meetings with Big Five, our collective experience and wisdom around these issues, when you have such a large investment being made in public education. I was around when they did it in 2009 with A R R A. And so some of this is is reflective of how we approached it then as well. All of it is good, is good thinking, is meant to stimulate and prime your thinking. There are no right or wrong answers, just things to try to be helpful and make sure we're disciplined in the way in which we address the the ideas and the recommendations. The first question is, how does this investment address current and long term student needs? And one of the things I've already begun to get staff doing is, where are our students right now? On a three tier basis, at least in that way, are we assessing the current student academic and social learning needs? And we have begun that, but we're going to have to do that with fervor in the weeks and months ahead, because without the evidence and without the data of exactly what our children need, that, you know, we'll be just shooting in the in the dark. We need to be making these decisions on evidence and on the basis of what our children need. We'll be looking at best practices in strategic thinking and decision making. And there are many to guide us. There's a whole literature on strategic thinking and decision making that we will put into this framework, as you will. How will the investment advance the effective use of educational technology? We're learning a lot as we have been in this remote learning environment for over a year now. We're going to continue to advance educational technology as a prime way of catching students up and allowing those students who have become more comfortable in the remote environment, letting them go ahead. For example, we're very seriously considering and will be bringing a proposal to you once we work out the regulations part of it, of an online pre K to 12 or maybe a three to 12 online high school next year. We think that that will address some needs of students who can go at their own pace and can maybe advance out of high school sooner and into a post-secondary option sooner. Why not? This is the kind of thing that is going to be on the table and may address some of our students' needs. That's just an example. Always, colleagues, and I should have bolded this, but always the emphasis will be on access, equity, opportunity, and quality. Access, equity, opportunity, and quality for all of these initiatives. How does this investment advance the strategic plan and structural priorities vision that goes to the district currently and as we as we go forward? I think that's very important. We have a strong strategic plan going forward now with the education bargain. We will want to look at deepening and broadening the bargain and what we do. Those six buttons that comprise the education bargain, those are important ones to to continue, to deepen and broaden. You don't throw the baby out right now because those have started to take root and they've started to get traction that that affects and works for children. So that's important. Another goal is, what or question is, what do we already know about the efficacy of this investment or the likelihood that it will be successful? So again, what's the what's the research say? Is this something that has been around for a while and it's a nuance or an iteration of an idea? And has it been proven to be successful and effective, particularly with our range of students? So backed by this cross disciplinary research, is it considered a best practice? What's the real chance for improving the student outcome? Or is it, you know, just kind of wishful, fly in the air sort of thing that we'd like to do, but all the, there's no evidence there supporting that it really can be successful for for our children? What's the communication plan, as as you have indicated, that clearly articulates the rationale, the evidence base, and the ultimate decision for making purchases that will support our children? You have to have a clear, transparent plan, I believe, around those issues. Again, the emphasis will be on access, equity, opportunity, and quality. What will it take to effectively and equitably implement this program or strategy? Do we have the right people at the table talking about this? Do we have the right people to execute the work? You know, sometimes we can have a really, really grand idea, but then when we start peeling it back and looking at it really closely, it might be more than we can handle with the capacity that we have. So we just have to, that'll be something to look at. Do we have the capacity to take on this investment at this time? Doesn't mean we can't or we won't, but we'll certainly have to look at that. Might not be able to do everything that we all like to do all at once. How will this investment be sustained? That's a really important question. Or continue to build district capacity after the funding has ceased? When it's thawed? We need to prioritize investments that build in terms We, we, we need to prioritize investments that build internal instructional and organizational capacity of the district. See, this is going to be legacy work, colleagues. This is building long haul. See, not just two years and done, but building long game so that this district stays best in class for a long, long time. We have the opportunity to do that. Let's not lose that chance. And then not least is how will we measure success? What will it look like? What are some of the measures, multiple measures that we will use to determine whether we've been successful with these initiatives? One of the things that's clear in the guidance is that you've got to be accountable for this money. We're going to be audited continuously. We'll, we'll, we'll have regulatory people coming in all the time. And if they catch a whiff, just a little whiff of mismanagement or misuse of these funds, we'll be in the national funding papers. So let's don't even think along the lines of some investments that might lead us down that path. Let's be transparent about what success looks like, how the progress will be measured during the implementation, at the end of funding, and beyond. Very important. And my staff and I will certainly help build a framework for us to do this. We have to be considerate and patient about the time needed for certain programs and approaches to take root. Some things are easy, do now, done. It's going to be high impact, high leverage, doesn't take a lot of time, doesn't take even a lot of resources. And some of those ideas have begun to come in. But others, you really, really need to build the foundation, put this plant the soil, put the soil down, plant the seeds, and let it take root and it over time. And it will be high impact, but it needs time to grow and to be cultivated. And then I just posed a question about accountability, colleagues. This is a time when perhaps more than, than others, and I know some of you've been training along this, we were in training together a couple of years ago. And we just have to spend more time on looking at student outcomes and, and the measures of those, how successful students are indicating that they're growing and glowing along these efforts. We just, we just have a bunch of things that we implemented, but none of it yields for kids. Then it was a waste of time, it was a waste of effort, and frankly, it was a waste of money. So I'm recommending sort of a, and you'll see this in the next part, we, we've got to separate these funds, we've got to have a different way of reporting out on the progress of the use of these funds along the lines of what they're intended to be used for. And then we have to hold ourselves accountable and our partners accountable. Everybody is accountable, parents, partners, business partners, community partners, anyone that's working with us in this work, they have responsibility too for the outcome. And that's kind of what I'm saying there on the next slide, Admir, and the final slide here is we need to build an infrastructure. Next slide, Admir. We need to build the infrastructure. I think I'm past all of that. I'm sorry. Keep going, keep going. How will we build the infrastructure to launch this work? And again, I don't have all the ideas, colleagues, but I know when we, when we won $110 million from the Gates Foundation, they required us and we saw that it was an effective way to set up a separate trust fund managed separate from the O and M. And that it was very tightly managed. We hired additional highly competent people to help us with the administration of the funding, not to tell us how to do it, but the administration and the reporting and monitoring of the use of these funds. And we managed it and reported it differently than you do when you're reporting a quarterly report or other kind of report to the board. And we have to meet federal guidelines in doing that. So I'm sort of starting early, but we'll come back to you with maybe what the initial foundation that we have to build a little bit of capacity into so that we can really manage these hundreds of millions of dollars effectively over the next several years. I hope that makes sense to you. All right, colleagues, that ends that part to give you a sense of the process that we're thinking about and certainly some of the elements of that process. Again, it's not completely baked, it's not all done and set in stone, but this is, these are some initial thoughts, some screens, some criteria. And again, we welcome your discussion, your comments at this time, so we can build that into, into our planning for this exciting work. Open for questions. Admir, if you could take down the slide and we'll turn it over to Mr. Petrucci.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, for taking the slides down right now. Fellow board members, does anyone have any questions of Dr. Cash's presentation?
I have a question.
All right, Paulette, you are first, the floor is yours.
Okay, Dr. Cash, in when we had to go to online learning and make that, and to make that transition, what we found was when the students had difficulties and they weren't able to handle the online learning and they needed support, what we had to do was build and lean on community resources. We had to reach out to community agencies and churches and community groups and, and have things and places and people who work with our children, are committed to our children, and just are in the community where the children can get to easily. We built, that is an outreach mechanism. So what I'm asking and questioning is we've got all this money now and additional resources, and I would hope that we would build a community arm and build on what we started with, what we learned from the online learning and build a community arm to work with us in the community, supporting these kids, supporting their emotional needs, hands-on training, just, but I, I think it was, it's a beautiful thing that we've started and I think we can build upon it. So what do you think about that?
Yeah, well, certainly thank you for that comment. I, I have a good sense of what you're talking about. And, you know, we'll, we'll certainly open up to those kinds of opportunities, to those kinds of opportunities. But again, we'll hope everyone will have to be held accountable for what do they propose that they can do to help? What is their deliverables that they, that they want to be able to be measured by and held accountable to? And essentially, you know, what are their timeline? What is the kind of group that they want to work with and so, and so forth? And what is their proven track record with working with, with children of that nature? So we'll have a process that we can set up to engage as many people as possible that can help. But again, we'll be disciplined about it, we'll be looking at research-based evidence, and we'll be, you know, very thoughtful, but as inclusive as possible. So your idea is, is not a, is, is, if, if you're talking about, for example, what we did with the virtual learning centers, that was something that was an outreach. We got, we got support from foundations and other philanthropy groups right here in the city. They opened up the community centers. I think a few churches opened their doors for our youngsters during that critical time. And, and, and that kind of teamwork and the community work around our children, everybody wrapping their arms around the needs of our children, that's what is absolutely going to be called, called for during this, during this time. So short answer, absolutely, yes.
Any other questions, fellow board members, before we move on to the next topic? Mr. Scott, I see your hand. Larry, the floor is yours.
Two questions, first being when we get to the point where we've exhausted all of the steps to gain public input on how the, how this money should be spent, will it then come before the board for us to approve the final plan?
Oh, absolutely. The board has to have ultimate and primary fiduciary oversight of all of this, in my, in my estimation. I mean, this money's coming to the district, but it's the board's fiduciary responsibility to manage and it's, and to see that the dollars are spent wisely and according to a plan. So yes, absolutely, I think that should be the process. And I don't see it as a one by one by one by one, come to the board, one, 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 you know, we'll bring things in appropriately segmented grants, because this, this is really supposed to be a series of grants assigned to specific needs of children. And when we get it fleshed out of here's the menu of ideas and strategies that we're going to be using to meet this section of the, of the dollars, you know, the grant dollars that will, then that should be brought to the board on an ongoing basis. And then the next session, the next session, and the next session. And maybe you get reports, certainly, I think every, every quarterly, absolutely, and maybe every two months, you, you get an overall high level where we are. And then in certain months, work in your work sessions, you focus on a particular section of that 20%. For example, it needs to go to learning, learning loss and making up for the social emotional needs and academic exposures of children. So there's a number of ways we can cut it and, and present it, but there's no doubt that the short answer is yes, that the board should be fully apprised and really overseeing fiduciary responsibility for all of this, as well as assuring that the, that the district's mission, the plan, the vision, all the things that you want to see happen around equity, for example, which, which is the lead piece, equity, access, quality, and opportunity, making sure that all of that is happening. I want us to be very transparent in reporting out about this. And I'm going to, I, I have to develop a process to help you do that, but, but that's what, what, what we have in mind at this point. Is that helpful, Larry? Or did I?
Yeah, I, I assumed that that was going to happen. I just wanted to clarify that there's going to be transparency, oversight, and accountability as to how this money is spent, but with the employer board informed and, and voting on it.
Yeah.
My second question, you started to actually add a bit on this, but wondering if, if it's not now, if it's, at what point it will be where we get a little bit more detail about extended learning in summer school and what that might look like to, you know, bring those kids up that have been disengaged and maybe have slipped behind a little bit to bring them back up to where they need to be, both academically and socially and emotionally?
Yeah, that's a great question, and we have been working on that. Let me see if I can bring you as soon as the board meeting of next week, under my report, sort of a menu that's been developed so far, elementary, high school, different needs, some of the kids who are advanced and have more enrichment kinds of needs and want to go, go do some additional things this summer. And then those who, for example, have, have had a lot of incompletes this year, have fallen behind and need, need to have an opportunity to catch up. And, and the goal would be to get them up to grade level, you know, by the start of the new school year. So we have, we have an array of some programs and, and ELT opportunities that I can have Anne Sayes is working with us, giving them the green light on, on two programs that they proposed and, you know, to further and finish planning so that we can bring that to you for final approval. And then we have an ELT, a robust plan for ELT for the remainder of this year and certainly hitting the ground right away all, all next year. That, that's going to be a big part of it is, is a big robust ELT plan for next year. Six days a week, for example, in terms of the opportunity. So if, if that's helpful, let me see what I can pull together for you as a board for next week under my report to answer that question more directly. Would that be helpful?
Absolutely. And, and I was just going to ask about whether Saturdays were going to be included in it in that later. It sounds like absolutely it will be. Great. Thank you, Dr. Cash.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this phase of the presentation, fellow board members? Yes, Dr. Anne Rivera, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I suspect I know the answer to this question already, but I think it's worth just stressing. How are you going to incorporate community feedback into the creation of this plan? Will it go into particular kinds of goals that need to be, that need to be shaped what our community feels that they need and align it with the new education bargain? I'm sorry, Dr. Cash, I believe you're muted.
You're right. Yeah, I'm sorry, Anne, I didn't, I didn't, couldn't, couldn't quite hear that, things that go in and out.
I'm happy to repeat it. So I suspect you know the answer to this, but I think it's worth clarifying a little bit and stressing the point, which is that we're going to be collecting community feedback on, on some, and input onto this budgeting process. Can you clarify for us how that community feedback is going to go into the plan process that you laid out for us here?
Certainly. So while it's early in, in, in this whole process, Will indicated in the slide, it says by May 24th, at least the initial effort, because we do have a, a little bit of time sensitivity, because the board is going to be adopting their, their budget for O and M somewhere around that time. So some of these could be O and M kinds of considerations, you see, and some could stimulus considerations, because there's a little bit more strict criteria for the stimulus dollars than there are for the O and M dollars. So I will want to make sure that we assign some of these community input ideas, those that, that have, you know, have plausibility and possibility to the proper, to the proper piece. So some will be time sensitive if it, if, if, when you're making your budget decision, you see. But certainly the team that I have on that with Will, I have Dr. Brown Hall, for example, I have Dr. Tangja Will Williams, I have Anne Botticelli assigned to that team, Jeff Pritchard. And they'll come in, the ideas will come in, and then they'll come into buckets, if you will, and then they'll come to me for final review. And then we'll come and bring them to you with some commentary around them.
That's the piece.
I'm trying to do a four quadrant piece, sort of low impact, high leverage, you know, low impact, low leverage, high impact, high leverage, and the quadrant, of course, low leverage, but high impact. So yeah, I'll do something with it, Anne, I haven't thought it all out yet.
I understand.
Everything is on the table right now, it's kind of like a brainstorming session, every, all the good ideas matter and we'll listen to them, but it doesn't mean everything will get into the execution box, if you will.
No, you're going to use, just to be clear, you're going to use the guidelines that you gave us here about identifying the high priority, high leverage, because whatever we want to fund, we want to make sure that we get student achievement back out from it.
That's right.
And it's just, it's useful to hear how the two things go together. So we can have it in front of us when we're looking at what you give us, but also that the community can understand how that feedback is going to get used. So I appreciate that.
Yes.
Any other questions for our distinguished superintendent? Hearing none, Dr. Cash, back to you for the next phase of the presentation.
All right, thank you, sir. So colleagues, this part is, well, no, I don't want to say that. This part is the next part. So phase three and four, I was going to say it'll be brief, but we, we can't predict that. It's, it's important. So we go take the time we need. I do see President Maker there and certainly want to say hello to you, Dr. Maker, and we look forward to hearing from you soon. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
So colleagues, some, what I'd like to do very quickly, you see in front of you, I don't have to read all of it, but I do. I don't have to read all of it, but I do want to be clear. We're not out of this yet. We're not out of it. We still have to wear masks. COVID-19 is here, it's well, and it is starting to surge again. You all know it, you read about it in the papers. We're not about politics here. We're about keeping people safe, keeping our children safe. And what I'm alluding to in this set of factoids, under this phase three, phase four reopening, uh, part of our plan, is that we have to stay vigilant, we have to stay cautious, and we have to realize, uh, that right here in Erie County, we're among the highest positivity rate in the state right now. And the, uh, cases are, are, we have not seen that they're headed this way yet. Um, it's in a range where we think that's, that's red. I talked to Dr. Quo this week. He says it is not a good idea, um, based on the data that you see here. Um, hospitalizations are still there. When, when you start to see hospitalizations strong, that means people are sick. This is not just, I tested positive, I'm fine, I did my five, 10 days, I'm back at work or I'm back at school. That means people are sick. And, uh, we're concerned about that. I'm concerned over the last three days that we are over 114 cases for our school system. And they say 100 cases per 100,000 is in the red zone.
Now, Dr. Cash, is there a presentation? I'm sorry to interrupt, Dr. Cash. Would you like us to start the presentation?
Well, I think, I thought it was in here somewhere. Oh, yes, you absolutely need to start the presentation.
All right, thank you, I just want to make sure.
All right. Admir, go ahead. The factoids, COVID facts, next slide. I apologize, colleagues. So colleagues, out in the public, uh, what I was beginning to speak about was that, you know, we're around still 70,000 new cases each day nationwide. Uh, the trend down to over 14 days is up. The death toll, as we all know, is, is, is just egregiously too high and more painful for us to think about, um, because of the, the, the extreme nature of the loss like that nationwide, it's millions of people globally. And Erie, Erie County is reporting new cases, uh, and we're at a 7.0 positivity, 7% positivity rate right now. BPS COVID total cases for the past three days is 114. That's the highest it's been since we've been, um, reporting this out to you each day. Now, granted, most of those cases are still in the remote learning environment, many, most of those cases are, are children who have, or, uh, people who have not come into, into school yet, but still, that's a high number. And most of them are students, which concerns us, concerns us deeply. There's, there's this article in the New York Times today that again, when we say, well, it doesn't happen with small children and we don't really need to test. I mean, I've been hearing this, but yet, colleagues, come on, this is a new disease. We don't know enough about it yet. We're learning about it all the time, all the time. And, and it's just too risky to start to take down certain guardrails that we know then will increase positivity rates and perhaps the rate of children getting sick. And I don't want one child to get sick because we did something that wasn't smart about this. So read that article, um, colleagues. I'll make sure that it gets to you in the email, because it, it says that even if a child has asymptomatic, uh, sort of response to a test or over a short amount of time that you need to be in quarantine, when we look longer term at our kids and our children, uh, who've tested positive or who may not have, we starting to see some important impact, concerning impact regarding neurological symptoms, pulmonary symptoms and other, uh, things that are happening with our young children. And it's just not acceptable if it happens that we could have done something differently. So I, I just, this is the thing that keeps certainly me up at night, and I know it does you as well. Next slide, please. Now, having said that, colleagues, we are, uh, and have been in remote learning for most of the year. And since February 1, um, we have had students still learning remotely while we've started to bring back students. So for example, our pre-K to two students, our high need students, our seniors were among the first students brought back in phase one. Phase two, we added some grades, grades three and four in the elementary and grades nine and 11, or partial nine and 11 in our high schools. Um, what I'd like Ms. Botticelli to do is share with you, uh, what has been going on instructionally with our, our students during this, um, first two phases and right up to date to right now, what we're learning from that and how we'll be carrying over, uh, that, that data, that positive data that we know is making a difference for our children into phases three and four. And then we'll hear a little bit very briefly about phase three and four, and, uh, we'll close this slide presentation. Anne Botticelli, are you up? You ready?
Thank you, Dr. Cash.
Thank you.
Um, so, good evening, everyone. I think you've heard me say some of this before, but I think it's important to reiterate, um, that we have continued to improve upon everything we've learned since we went out last year. Remote instruction has solidified, teachers have developed a, a great comfort level with technology that we may not have had in the past because it just wasn't as prevalent. And that learning from remote has made the transition to concurrent much easier. Um, our IT department has been phenomenal. They sent people out at the beginning of phase one to support that first week of implementation. Um, and from that, we did learn, um, where there were potential issues. So, for example, if someone was struggling a little bit managing two screens, that was something that the IT department could support them with. If someone was trying to figure out how to get the active inspire to work on their IWB while they were with a concurrent group, that was something the IT department could support them with. So, um, many, many thanks. They're juggling a lot of balls, but they have been really wonderful supporting the teachers. And I think the comfort level teachers have developed allows them to point out when there is something they want to work on. So they're, they're more able to say, this is where I'm struggling, or, um, my student is experiencing this. Whereas in the very beginning, we might not have recognized what, what could potentially be causing, um, any kind of gap. So we've continued to build on our experiences from phase one, um, and teachers are continuing to share best practices. I think in the very beginning, in February, when we came back, everything felt very new, but the comfort level has really increased and improved, um, because we've had experience now with hybrid and concurrent instruction. So teachers in phase two were actually able to talk to their colleagues who had brought students back during phase one. So if the, if they learned anything, um, in phase one, the, the teachers preparing for phase two could find out exactly what the technology, um, scenario would be. They were able to make at the school level minor tweaks to schedules based on what they were seeing in phase one. I think families had a greater comfort level coming back in phase two because they were used to using our technol, or, excuse me, our COVID screeners and all that type of thing. So there was definitely that comfort that was built, um, moving from phase one to phase two. We learned a lot about technology again. Um, we learned how to set up classrooms. So, and I, teachers continually share best practices with one another, which is why they're such a fantastic workforce. People have been using breakout rooms very strategically in their classrooms. Um, so even when it first rolled out and we were 100% remote, um, teachers began to experiment and now we've provided some additional training and teachers are starting to use those more strategically, um, in the classroom, perhaps while they're working with one group. So they might be working with students who are in person and they can have the other students doing breakout groups. They can combine breakout groups between students who are remote and students who are in person to sort of build that connectivity in the classroom. Um, so they've really been strategic about how they have used that to support learning. And I can't say this enough, I, I've heard this from principals, teachers, just the joy of seeing students in person, I think, has been a wonderful experience. So it was, we learned about our kids when they were remote and we developed those relationships with them, and then actually getting to see them in person, I think, has just been a wonderful experience at the school level. Um, we've talked about a lot of this before. We are continuing to add to our professional development opportunities. So we had some baseline training for teachers and then we've also provided more along the lines of special education. So what does it look like in a co-teaching environment if you're concurrent? Um, how do you use breakout rooms? Not just how do you create them, but then how do you use them instructionally? Um, we continue to provide information about Schoology and improving this, the performance there. Our mentors, um, who support our new teachers have been conducting virtual support visits with those teachers and answering questions as they come up. Um, again, we've had FAQs and guidance provided. Um, office hours are offered through the technology department as well as through multilingual and CAI, um, special education. So those people are always available to support any teachers with questions. Um, and again, we've created special subject area groups in Schoology so that, um, questions can be asked and answered directly for each department and materials get posted there immediately. Our curriculum is housed there, a sort of a one stop shop for any teacher, um, who needs that additional support. Next slide, please, Admir. I just wanted to highlight, um, we, we talked about this a lot, that we're leveraging our online programs, but I don't want that to just be a, a talking point. I wanted to show you. Um, so we've definitely seen increased usage in programs like Schoology, MobiMax, Myon. Below, you can see a slide from NearPod comparing last year's usage to this year's usage. So it's looking at activity submissions. The gray reflects last year, um, from August to March, and the blue reflects this year's usage from August to March. So an activity submission is something a student would submit. So it might be a quiz, um, they might be answering an open ended question, responding to a poll, um, doing some matching activities. I personally love the draw it items that they can do, um, because if you're in a math classroom, you can sketch out the math problem for the teacher, um, or you can draw the model that you're looking at in a science classroom. Um, so those are really good opportunities. NearPod allows us, um, to have students actively engage in the learning. It's got some great opportunities. You can use it on a self-paced, uh, way for kids so they can go on themselves, or you can use it as a whole class activity, but you can always embed those engagement strategies to make sure that you are checking for understanding, um, to make sure you have data on how your students are participating and responding to what you're talking about in class. Um, so we found NearPod to be very useful, and I, I think you can see the teachers find it very useful as well. The nice thing about all these programs is, um, we're keeping them, right? So they weren't just purchased for this scenario while we're out and remote. Um, these are, many of these are things that we already had. We already had Myon, we already had Schoology, we already had NearPod. Um, so we've just in, increased usage and improved, um, the way we use it to interface with students and the way we integrate it into our actual classes. And we're going to continue to build on that as we return to full in-person. Um, I think we've said it a lot, technology's not going away. It's something that we know that we need to use, um, more strategically in the in-person classroom. And so all these opportunities will allow us to, to continue to build that practice and embed these opportunities in the actual curriculum. Thank you. Now you can go to the next slide, Admir.
Thank you, Anne. That was, that was, colleagues, that's a significant slide, and that was for NearPod only, and that's student work being submitted. So that's, that's a 3 million submissions plus is, is significant, uh, indication of work, um, and, and being, and being done and being evaluated. So I didn't want you to lose the significance of, of that data. All right. I think we have two of our distinguished colleagues that will share just at a high level where we are with phase three and what we're calling phase three and phase four. Um, we have already made the decision, um, not to go to three feet. We will not be going to three feet, and that is at the recommendation of our, um, medical director at this time. He says it's too early, uh, to be doing that while we're in, uh, a climate where, where the, the data does not warrant us, us to do that at this time. Colleagues, three feet is basically right next to each other. It's, it's as if you had a class of 25, 30 students, they would all be in that, in that classroom, be able to come to that classroom. We are not ready, uh, to do that. And the second part that I want to say before I bring on David Hills and Cassandra Wright is that, uh, we have gone though from eight feet to six feet, and we have made accommodations for students who were in music and the arts, where the, there was 12 feet distance. We're making with the additional purchase of PPE equipment that's specifically designed for music courses, for example, and for instruments, uh, we're going to be able to get more students into those courses, uh, with a six foot, uh, space. Uh, so that's good, good news. All right, David, can you give us the high level, uh, for secondary, followed by Dr. Cassandra Wright for elementary? And then colleagues, I will give you some of my notes on the big level statistics of how many are back, what percentage, and what percentage has opted to stay home, remote for the rest of the year.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, absolutely, and thank you, members of the board. The April 26 for ninth through 12th grade is the beginning of phase three. All but three of our high schools have just ninth through 12th grade populations. And for phase three, they will be inviting back anyone who opted out of the, um, first two phases and anyone who, um, is in a group that wasn't invited. Uh, so for a school that invited freshmen and seniors and some juniors, the rest of the students that weren't invited already will be invited back. April 26 is the start of the fourth quarter, um, which ends on April 23rd, is the end of the third quarter. So it allows students a full quarter, um, to start back to work. Now, the three high schools who have, um, five through eight populations, their phase four invitation will roll out to those populations with the elementary rollout on May 10th. The most students in the high schools, phase three and phase four, will be accommodated through a hybrid setting of two days elite groupings. One of the big constricting factors is not necessarily only the classroom, but being able to serve four lunches and having the cafeteria spacing. So principals and their, their school support teams and their stakeholder meetings have done a lot of really good work of scoping out exactly how they can schedule students so all students can be invited back for phase three. And all students who either opted not to return in phase one or two, or who, um, were not invited back will not be given an opportunity. Now, the, uh, the, uh, high schools did have some seniors that were on one or two day senior support models, depending on their work schedule, depending on what they needed. Those students, if they are still thriving, will stay on those models. Um, we also have our five day a week high need students that have been invited back, um, that were in our phase one, and those students, where possible, will be retained on that model. The, the school teams, the ministry of teams are very excited. They've been communicating with their students since well before break, uh, that this was a potential, and they're excited to start on April 26.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
David, what's the free decor out there among our teachers and staff and, and students? What, what's the EQ, if you will, out in the, out in the field? How are people feeling? What's the energy like, the enthusiasm? Or the downer, you know, what, 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 what's the temperature reading?
What has happened as since, uh, students who have returned for phase one and phase two have seen success in catching up on their incompletes, on being more engaged, because they're invited because they're high need. A lot of schools are very excited to give more students opportunity. The one, uh, doubt I hear is a lot of schools wish they could break everyone to five day, uh, but it's just not working out for some space restrictions. But where possible, schools are looking at five day options. But it's, there's been a positive response to seeing how students who are in person are thriving and are engaging and foreseeing those students who truly are doing well in remote. who truly are doing well in remote, remaining remote. But I think the sense of prior phases has built on the sense of what the potential is for Phase 3.
That's great. That's great. And colleagues, if I could give a high-level observation for the high school before we go to the elementary, approximately 2,519 students have been invited to return in, at the secondary level during these phases, 3 and 4, and 3,746 secondary students have chosen, chosen to remain home. If you look for the remainder of the year, and if you look at the total cohort of high school students, which are a little over 6,000, that means that across all phases this year, 56% of the students have chosen to accept the invitation to come back, and about 44% are remaining home. That's important to note. Even with all of the, you know, all of the things that you've heard this year, it's stayed pretty consistent around what I've indicated to you earlier, between that 55% and 65%. And so right now, 56% of students across all of the high school grades, we expect to come back on April and be there in-person, April 26. I hope that makes sense to you. Okay, Dr. Wright, you're up.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, and the board members. So to reiterate what Dr. Cash so emphatically stated, and we support, because we sincerely care and are inimitably prepared for these real circumstances, this is our time to show the nation how this extraordinary educational work is done. There is no place I would rather be, and no work I'd rather do. Before I talk about the elementary phase, and I just have to say kudos to the principals, teachers, teacher aides, teacher assistants, security, support staff, engineering team, food service, transportation, class department, central office, and most of all, families, for how seamlessly all of these massive entities worked meticulously together during the most trying times of our life to ensure every single detail was attended to in order to protect the safe and happy return of all of our elementary children. So our students and families who originally opted out have been re-invited for Phase 4, which also commence on May 10, on May 10. Now, elementary students are invited for three days' learning. Our children will attend five days a week. So it's important to note, at this time, that action is the only time kids spend with their teacher. The other three days are spent asynchronously sleeping. In the model that Dr. Cash envisioned, and we all work together to enact, every child is learning from their own teacher every school day, either in-person, at home, or both. So I think that we really have to celebrate this huge win in a district with thousands, tens of thousands of students. We were able to come together collectively and make this plan a reality for our families. All elementary students, pre-K through 8, have been or are in the process of being invited back for Phase 4. To reiterate, unless there's a safety concern, because we have always said, the safety of our children, families, faculty, and staff comes first. So unless there's a safety concern, every last one of our children have been invited to in-person instruction. All of our children, all of them, are learning with their teacher five days a week, either online, in-person, or both. Again, team, this was a massive undertaking that was seamlessly operationalized, again, because we care about our children, and we, in the city of Buffalo, Buffalo Public School District, we are inimitably prepared for this work. Thank you, Dr. Cash.
Absolutely. Excellent, as always, Dr. Wright. Really, really well-stated. So colleagues, for the elementary, pre-K through 8 grades, approximately 4,352 elementary students have been invited back for Phase 3 and 4. So that'll primarily be your 4th, your 5 through 8 grades, and then those who opted out in the first part of the year, they have an opportunity now to come in this final phase. 6,311 at this time. There's some more we're still trying to get accounted for, but approximately 6,300 students chose to remain home for the, I'm sorry, remain remote and at home for the remainder of the school year. So this will amount to about 58% to 62% of enrolled students in the pre-K through 8 continuum will be coming back in. The remainder will be at home. And again, that, that fits pretty consistently with the data across all phases of 40% to 40 to 50%, somewhere in that category, staying home, and 50 to 60-plus percent choosing to accept our invitation and come back in person. So that's how it'll shape up the rest of the year. We're still getting some data there. Keep in mind that transportation challenges are, are part of this. We still need to keep, because we did not get good, clear guidance. If you look at all of the extensive guidance that's been provided by the state, by CDC, county, they don't say much about, about buses. And we've, we've been transporting our students, one child per seat, not two and three per seat, as you can do when, when, when we're not in a COVID environment. And that has implications in a domino way of how many we can bring back, since we have a majority student population who takes the yellow bus to school. But Cheryl Kennedy and her team have just been extraordinary, and they are going to make it happen as safely as we can for those who want to come back. So that's the high-level point of it. I don't really see us getting into a five-day-per-week scenario for kids anytime soon. If I can do it, and if we can do it, I'm going to look at it after these phases come in and we get everybody in who has accepted the invitation. My priority would be pre-K through two children. I really want to see those young, younger children in school every day, if we can. That would be my preference and recommendation to you. But until we get in, Dr. Coles says, give it two weeks after your phases to see where this virus is here in this community, before we go to a five-day picture for any of our students. A few last comments I will make. I am pleased that Erie County has offered to, well, they've asked us if they could use several of our schools to vaccinate citizens. We gladly accepted that. They'll take care of all of the logistics and operational detail around that. So they're going to vaccinate and continue to vaccinate in several of our schools. We would like them to use more of our schools. We've offered that from the very beginning, that we're prepared to help with getting more people vaccinated. Now that Pfizer is beginning a program to vaccinate young people, I think between the ages of 13 and 18, we're interested in, in any support we can offer around that as well, including PSA announcements to encourage our young people to get vaccinated. Many of these cases that we're seeing for the Buffalo Public Schools, it's alarming to me, because most of them are students. Most of them are students. And I did not expect that. I don't think we expected that. So we've got to vaccinate our younger people and get that program for them as well. So those are some of the comments and observations, and, and that's our report for Phase 3 and 4. Thank you, colleagues, for your part. I was turning it back over to you, Lou. I still believe we're in your committee.
Oh, we are, Dr. Cash. Thank you. So at this point, do we have any questions for Dr. Cash or senior staff that made the presentation regarding Phase 3 or Phase 4? So if there was any questions, you can signify, be they raising your hand remotely or raising your hand where I can see. Any questions at this point? Is it, Paulette, you were first, followed by Board Member Larry Scott. So Board Member Woods, followed by Board Member Scott. Paulette, the floor is yours.
No, I was, I was raising my hand to tell you that Terrence heard Larry and Jen had their hands up. I, I wasn't raising my hand.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll go Larry, Terrence, and then Jen. So Larry, followed by Terrence, followed by, yes.
Lou, sorry for interrupting. Could you ask Admire to take the slide down?
Yes, Admire, can you take the slides down? All right, Mr. Scott, followed by Mr. Hurd, and then on deck, Ms. McCozy.
So I have a quick question before, but before I get to that, I just want to commend staff on the concurrents model that we are using. Both of my boys are participating in that, and it, it really has gone well for both of them. And really, really, really want to commend all of our teachers that are implementing the concurrents model, because I've done it myself. I, I see it happening in, in the buildings that I'm in in Kenton. It is not easy to implement. It is a tremendous challenge. So I commend all of our teachers that have adapted to doing this, and I hope we get to a point soon where, where you will no longer have to, to do, do the concurrent teaching, because it is such a challenge to do. My quick question was, I, I want to make sure I heard you correctly, Dr. Cash. You said for elementary, 58% are returning or have chosen to return in a hybrid model, and 42% are choosing to stay full remote for the rest of the year?
Yes. We, we expect that number to go up just a bit. The ASLs, Associate Superintendent of School Leadership, and the principals are still working out those numbers as we speak. So we, I, I expect that number to climb to as high as 62% for the students who come back, and then about 38% will, will remain home for the remainder of the year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hurd, do you have any questions for the superintendent's staff regarding the presentation?
Yes, Mr. Petrucci. My question is about the COVID shots. Now that New York State deemed that youth cannot receive COVID vaccinations, are we looking at any studies about who can, who will return back to the classroom upon COVID vaccinations among our youth?
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the question, Mr. Hurd.
Now that, now that youth can receive COVID shots, I believe it was 16 to 18, how would that affect reentry back into our school building from our youth coming back into the classroom? And are we looking into the possibility of having a, a drive that we can have our, our students participate in, in receiving COVID vaccinations so that they may be able to turn back into the classroom, return back to the classroom safely?
Well, let me say a few things. Let me, I appreciate your question. First of all, this is early on with it. They're trying to get it rolled out. I think Pfizer is leading, leading this effort for children, for youth. Youth will still have to have permission from their parents to do this. We do see a challenge still with a disproportionate number of Black and Brown children and families who, certainly families who are not vaccinated. Even when the opportunity to do so is there, you'll see a very disproportionate number who've actually gotten the vaccine. So that's a concern. So I'm not, and then it takes time. It takes five weeks at least to get fully vaccinated, to where you're in that 90, 93% protection bracket. So I don't, I don't know whether it will mean that more students will come back because they're getting vaccinated or not. That's my point. I don't know. That will be left up to parents. All I know is what we can do is, is when they're made available, we're going to encourage families to do it, students to do it, parents to give permission for, for their students to do it, and we're going to facilitate in any way that we can. That's what I can say for sure.
Okay. And I know that you mentioned about using our building facilities as vaccination centers. Any way that could be tied to our youth also who's willing to participate, and families that wouldn't participate with the vaccinations?
Well, we've offered that, Mr. Hurd, but we don't control that. That's really up to the local Erie County Department of Health, and they have said they'd like to use two schools. But if you, if you follow their press conferences, they're also talking about it depends on them getting the quantity and the supply of vaccinations. And sometimes that's been problematic with, for, for them. So whatever they get, if, if we, if we can use it in our, in our up next, if you will, then we'll continue to announce and help support everyone getting vaccinated as quickly as possible. That's, that's the problem we're in. The other, the other challenge, Mr. Hurd, is the, the testing itself. When kids are now starting to come back and the numbers that are coming back, we need to up our testing regimen, not lessen it. And so we were ahead of most districts when we were in the 20 to 30% range of testing every day. Now we're going to have to go up even higher. And so to Mr. Larry Scott's credit, he, he called staff and asked me if I would assign staff to a, to a phone call with the Department of Health and Human Services. They have a new secretary there who's being very aggressive about helping school districts, especially high-need districts like ours, with increasing the testing protocols and regimen, and especially the test that is more valid and reliable than this rapid testing, which has a lot of false positives associated with it. And short bottom line is, we were on the call two days ago. We, we were grateful for their support, and they, and they're going to come help us test more children and test more so that we can bring everyone back safely and with more accurate testing results.
Okay. My, my last question, thank you, Dr. Cash, is you said there's two locations that we're looking to use for the vaccination sites. Do we have the capacity of vaccinating at these sites, or will refrigeration be brought in so that we, they can use it for testing?
Let's see. Tanja, are you there? Dr. Williams, I believe we've worked this out, and they were comfortable with their, with the choices. Tanja, would you be the one to answer that question? I think the answer is yes, is my point. I forget which schools they were. What, Tanja, do you have the schools offhand?
Yeah. I don't have the schools offhand. I will share that information, but the short answer is yes, that we do have proper refrigeration, and we will be ready to support that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. West District member and former softball coach Jen McCozy. Jen, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Vice President Petrucci. So my question is, now that, you know, we're bringing students back, and a lot of students were just, were sitting at home, with physical education, I know that the, the guidelines have changed from I know that the guidelines have changed from like 12-foot to 6-foot. Are we honoring that as we're bringing students back? Or are we still keeping that 12-foot distance between students? I feel like we're going to have more gym classes, more students.
Oh, gym class?
Yeah, like just physical education in general. Are we going to move from the 12-foot distancing to 6-foot now that we have more students coming back? And then how will that look now that we have more students coming back, even though we know the need for physical education is probably more intense than ever? You know?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I'm not sure I have the answer to it. I know that if you structure physical activities directionally, you know, fully masks and separated, you can certainly have a really good physical education class with lots of movement and activity for kids. I think I'd have to ask about that before I answer it. Short answer is absolutely, that's an important class. Kids need so much physical activity. I've seen the kid, they're out of shape. They can hardly move some of the youngsters when they get out there and start playing. It's really, oh my God, we've got to help these youngsters. But the good news is, you saw how we handle basketball. You see how football is progressing. We can do this when we're very focused and structured and pay attention to the protocols. So I'm confident that we can get this PE thing figured out. I'll ask about that, though. I made a note of it, Jen.
So then my follow-up question, and thank you for that, would be, can we, maybe instead of what we currently do in our PE classes when it comes to nicer weather, can we really look into strategizing using outside, especially for distance sake, and really getting kids outside more often than we would have in any other? You know, I know there's protocol every year, but if we can double those efforts, I feel like that would not only deal with the situation with the distancing, but it's necessary.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see a hand raised by former Angola resident Paulette Woods. Ms. Woods, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Committee Head Lou Petrucci. I just want to ask-
Champion, legendary athlete, inscrutable board member, two-term, former, okay. Now, go ahead, Paulette.
Man for all seasons, diplomat. My question focusing on a couple concerns in the community. Now that we're talking about using schools for vaccinating, vaccination sites, what about the issue that has been continually raised about vaccinating teachers? Everybody that vaccinates focuses on getting their own cover of students. But what about a teacher? That's a question because that might stabilize our environment and our morale. The other community question, which I need to get you to focus on and give some response to, is the brunt of this COVID situation has fell on the backs of our parents, especially women. And they've lost their jobs, and they cannot return to employment on a two-day-a-week schedule. So my question is, it evidently doesn't seem like it's going to happen this semester. But I really do think in order to rejuvenate, restore our economy, and for God's sake, give the parents a break, I think we need to really kind of put it out there that we are looking to get back to five days a week and people can go back to work. Is that the thinking or possible?
No. So the first question, let me answer that one first. I forgot what it was because of the extended comment there. What is the first question?
Vaccinating teachers, since we're using our facilities, and they are a key constituent.
Okay, the two schools, by the way, colleagues, MST and Southside, those are the schools that the Erie County Department of Health will be using to vaccinate community members. The teacher issue, I asked Bill a long time ago, you know, are you going to encourage teachers to get vaccinated? And keep me apprised of the effort. Keep me apprised of the percentage of teachers that are getting vaccinated. I thought that was a very good VTF initiative, and we can partner in it and do whatever. I would probably guess, I don't have the data, but I would guess a large percentage of teachers have been vaccinated. I really do. And when I look at where these centers and sites have been and how important it is to our health, I would think teachers have been aggressive at getting vaccinated. I'd like to know the actual data, but I don't have it. We did talk to, you know, I put a communication to VTF president early on on this. The second part is, again, this is an engineering challenge, colleagues. We're doing the very best we can. We're looking at it based on, don't forget, you have 58% or 40, 40-some percent who are choosing to stay home, choosing to stay home with their children. And I'm sure they have those challenges as well. But we can't guarantee any five days a week anytime soon according to our medical professionals. They're saying it's very active out there. This virus is very active right now, and we need to do all due diligence right now. As I said-
Well, I was referring to next semester, not, you didn't seem to indicate this semester, but I'm saying the next school year, for God's sake.
Oh, next year? I'm hoping we're past this. I'm expecting us to have a full school year next year. I can't guarantee it because I don't know the direction of this and variants and so forth. But this variant is very virulent right now. These variants are no joke, and that's what's causing this rise in part. And then people are gathering in families and in other ways. And now we're waiting on all of the return from people traveling at unprecedented numbers during the spring break. And they're going to be coming back into New York from all over. And so we're not out of the, we don't have the end of the directional arrow on these cases yet. It's, you know, it's just, it's a problem. It's a problem. So yes, you're right. This will, when we look back on this, this will be the year of the family, the year of the parent. There's no doubt about it. And we're doing our part of the bargain to do what we can to keep our children educated, to keep them engaged, and to keep them with their same teacher they had from the beginning of the year. They've had them all year long. I think that is remarkable, and Dr. Wright has indicated. So now the parent's responsibility is to make sure that there's organization at home, there's discipline, and that you keep your kid focused and online every day, every morning, when their class periods start from the morning until the end of the day. That's what it is this year. That's what it is. Next year, we hope it's better for everyone.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Because I have a few. But before I, I just want to, any other question from my fellow board members? No? All right. I just have three. With respect to the rise in the cases, is any of this being associated with spring break? Either children going away at spring break, families going away on spring break, or just the associations of large groups because everyone was on vacation? The weather was really nice?
Well, I haven't had the deep-dive conversation with Dr. Quo to say what the causes are yet. I think it's early. You usually don't see until a week or two when you come back off of a break kind of a situation. And it's still in the first week of that. But basically, all of the above, basically all of the above, you can observe behavior yourself out and about in the town. And I still think most people are disciplined. Most people try to adhere to the masking requirement and the distancing requirement. I applaud businesses that tell you specifically, stand here and six feet away from the next person. Places where I go, for example, they're very good about that. But there's a number of reasons why folks have, you know, why this is still active and alive in Erie County. And I don't propose to be the expert about it. We'll continue to have to hear what ECDOH says. Dr. Quo, if you want him to come next week, he can come and tell you what they're finding. But as you know, Lou, it's a complex, it's a complex issue. A lot of people are just plain tired, you know? They're just plain tired of wearing masks, you know? People will tell you that. But I can't say that as a school system and as educational leaders, we can't cotton to that, to that protocol. We have to stay very disciplined, very strict with how we adhere to safety protocols, and we will do that.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. With respect to the high school and grade school, the percentage of students returning, I know that a lot of what I've been reading is that there's been a higher percentage of families and children of color that are not returning. I was just wondering if you looked at what the demographics look like with respect for our kids who are coming back, those who are choosing to come back and those who are returning or who are choosing to remain fully remote?
Yes, that's what I was alluding to earlier, Lou. The disproportionality that occurs in society writ large is manifest in our school system. So yes, the majority of students and families who've chosen to stay home for the rest of the year are, the great majority of that is people of color.
Thank you, then. Go ahead, Dr. Cash.
Similar with vaccinations. I mean, I talk to folk, and we're looking at data. If you talk to Dr. Williams, you know, she has some informal understanding about this. It's what people are resistant to taking a vaccination because of our history, frankly, people of color with vaccinations, with hospital care and treatment. Now you come out yesterday with what's going on with Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, and that's going to add a whole new ripple into, oh my God, see, I'm not going to take any vaccination. Look at that. We don't know what the effects could be. So it's a complex environment that we're in right now. And multiple factors are contributing to all of this.
And last question, as we return more and more students, as you had spoken to earlier about transportation, I just am always concerned because I know that we've struggled with both AIDS and drivers. I just want to make sure that we have enough to successfully and timely get our kids to school.
Well, we've been all over that the last several weeks before we left school and before we, and when we came back. There are two, at least two employees. I know there are others, but I certainly want to call off two. Myra Burden for IT and Cheryl Kennedy and her team for transportation. Those two world-class educators and leaders and their teams did not have a break this April 1st through April 12. They did not take it. They were working round the clock to try to figure out the pieces that need to be figured out to get the students who want to come back onto routes and onto buses. And the good news is, we have enough buses to do it. And so far, we've had enough drivers and even AIDS. While we may not have AIDS for every bus, we have a really good percentage of AIDS that will be on these buses as well. Is that helpful?
It's very helpful. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Before I conclude, I know that President Cotton asked for five minutes. So President Cotton, I'll give you your five minutes.
Can you hear me? Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes, we can.
So this is very timely as to the growth of the board and the outcomes that we want to see. You guys approved for me to be a part of the Council of Great City Schools, a training program that they're having. Their ultimate goal with this training program is to help districts and to increase the success of their student body through the use of educating boards. And the church, this Saturday will be our next eight-hour session. But under the first session, how it started is, in order to get different results, there is a need in public education to change the mindset of the adults. And that you cannot change the outcome without changing the input and the use of board time as well as the goals that are associated with the success of boards. Contrary to popular belief, there are high-poverty districts that are high performing. And it basically, it is, it is based upon the commitment that the board chooses to do as far as the work that the board needs to do in order to get the outcome. In a normal school year period, we spend $1 billion easily to educate our children. But we're not receiving the output as the outcome that we want to see as far as high student achievement. And so I had staff give each and every one of you the, one of the first handouts that was provided to me. The handout is about student outcome-focused government. And in order to, I'm hoping that this board will agree to go through this process that they are providing for us. It is a coaching process that we would do ourselves. And if you take the time to walk through each one of these, we talk about our visions, our goals. In addition to that, the guardrails in regards to the superintendency evaluation, monitoring and accounting, accountability of the work and the time that the board is using, communication and collaboration with our community, unity and trust, and continuous improvement. They provide a list of definitions, and they also provide references. And the first reference that they recommend a board to take a look at, it's on page 13 of the document that you have, is the roles and responsibilities of local school board members in relationship to student achievement. And I wanted to bring that out to the board because if we are about moving this district to the next level, we need to be about changing our mindset, our perspective of, our understanding that boards should be governance agencies, not involved in the output of students and productivity. And I am going to work with any board member, I hope the entire board wants to do it, but I will work with any board member who wants to work through this program to get us to a higher level and to utilize our time in a more efficient and effective way. One of the, one of the items that is inside of this package is the board self-evaluation, which deals with the time. This weekend, I will spend approximately eight hours learning how to, or to discuss how the time that the board uses. Over 50% of our time should be spent solely on student outcome. So hopefully, you guys will agree to be a part of it. I'm trying to figure out if it's something that we would do as a subcommittee of the board, but I am going to move forward with it. And hopefully, we will be able to benefit from this. The board has spent a significant amount of money for us to participate in this, and I'm sure that we can learn something from it. I see a hand up, Jen. Yes.
President Cotton, what I reviewed when I saw the documents and what you were saying, is this similar to the training that- is this similar to the training that we had taken a couple of years ago? It seems some of the documents are almost the exact same. Is this, is this, uh, an updated version or the same?
No, I don't know what, I don't know what you're referring to, but I do know that-
The training that we all went to, that, um, we took as a board around governance, uh, at Emerson a couple of years ago? It seems as though a lot of that is the same. And I'm just wondering, is this like a updated version? Is it, you know, kind of a review? Um, it came from the same place, so.
It's the same.
It's the same. Dr. Cash, it's the same.
I think it has the same, however, when the board, when a board signs up for this training, it is not a one-session training that the council did.
We signed up for it and did the training. They came to Buffalo, they were here for three days, remember?
I understand, I remember that.
We were there when President, they came and they, we were there for a solid, um, I believe it was like six to eight hours for three, three consecutive days. Dr. Cash was there.
Correct.
Right. And, and we did not move in that direction, but just so that you know.
We tried, we attempted to, yes. There was a lot of momentum behind it at that time when, when Dr. Nevergold was, was president.
We never got to the, uh, level that other boards are at currently working in this district. So yes, that, that was the abbreviation, that was the abbreviated session, but currently part of this is to monitor other school boards in regards to what they're doing. Uh, upwards of 20 different school boards we have to monitor. And, uh, the purpose for this is to move this district from being governance-only or primarily to being more student outcome-focused. And so for the board members who are interested in moving to the next level, we can set up and we can move forward with that. But it, we cannot continue to spend a billion dollars and not have a successful student outcome. It's counterproductive and it's not working for, uh, our student bodies. And that's what we, where we are, okay?
Thank you, President Kotman. Uh, at, at this point, um, that concludes the executive affairs, um, committee meeting. Uh, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to student achievement. Uh, I know that, welcome Kenya, I see you up in the corner, always good to see you. Um, I, I don't know because we have speakers present if you want to, uh, again, this is for student achievement and educational support. We have speakers, uh, for education support and student achievement. I know that, uh, Dr. Mazer's been very patient, I get to see him in the center screen. Uh, but again, it's up to student achievement and education support. At this point, I turn it over to Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown. Dr. Evans-Brown, the floor is yours.
You know, I, um, hello everyone. I do not mind pausing, uh, to allow our, uh, guests to go ahead. Um, wish your pleasure, uh, uh, Terrence Hurd.
Um, how long is your committee gonna take, um, Dr. Evans-Brown?
Well, according to Dr. Cash, about 20 minutes, Dr. Cash?
Yeah, you know, I, I really am sensitive, um, to, to Dr. Maker and to, uh, Ms. Sawyers, I see, and Mr. Hobbs. I, I think that we'll be fine with this last section. It's not the same level of gravity, it's just information, uh, and awareness for the, for the community. I would recommend that we let Dr. Maker and, uh, the colleagues for the, uh, student support, uh, go at this time.
Okay, I agree. Go ahead, Dr., um, Mr. Hurd.
Uh, thank you, um, Dr. Evans-Brown and Dr. Cash. Um, as of right now, we do have two, two parts to, um, educational support committee this evening, and, um, we will address the, the second part of it is, which is actually Madai College, the youth-inspired programs and how they work with the district and the city of Buffalo and programs that'd be available. So what I would like to do right now is, um, open up the educational support committee for this part only, and we will look at, um, we will speak with, um, Dr. Kenneth McCoura, the president of Madai College, um, Michelle Sawyers, uh, Sheen Alum, and, um, Kenya Hobbs. And, um, they will talk about the programs that Madai College offered to the Buffalo Public Schools and to the city of Buffalo. We also, um, will talk about, um, a great announcement that Dr. McCoura has, something we've been talking about for a couple of years now, and, uh, to think is a fantastic idea, and it's something that this college and institution has looked to, uh, help promote Buffalo. And, and I do love the job that Dr. McCoura has done, you know, in changing the outlook and scope of Madai College, um, as he, um, opened up to the city of Buffalo since he's, um, been the president there at that facility. And, um, he also talked about a couple of other things, how he worked with the district and a couple of our schools and many of our students in programming and, uh, things that we can help, help him with and work together, uh, for the, as a game changer, you know, for our community. So at this time, I'll leave, uh, open up the door to do some, Dr. Kenneth Maker of Madai College, and as we, and for him to, um, start his presentation. Thank you.
Super, well, thank you, everybody. Thanks for having us here. With me again are, are Kenya Hobbs, who is the Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion at Madai College, and Michelle Sawyers, who is the Director of Say Yes, Madai College. Sherry Alum, who's our, uh, upward bound director, couldn't make it, uh, tonight. We did have a present, a, a slide deck, uh, if that's available to go. Uh, I'll keep talking until it comes up and we'll, we'll just catch up on it. Hearing your conversations are very reminiscent of the ones we have on campus these days in terms of surviving COVID. Uh, we're debating mandatory vaccines for students, faculty and staff with the normal exception for medical reasons and religious reasons. Uh, our students, faculty and staff did a great job. Uh, with about 2,500 students, faculty and staff, the highest point of, uh, cases that we had in the fall was under 20, uh, and we're doing even better in the spring. Um, we had a little bit more latitude. We canceled spring break, no more fun. Uh, it was really easy to, to get through when we just eliminated the opportunities for students to gather and not stay focused. Um, in terms of, you know, the years, yes, 2019, 20 was very difficult in terms of just making that transition. Uh, but like you, we have a fantastic IT staff, uh, that helped us transition and an ed tech committee that worked with faculty, uh, to get them up to speed on remote learning and working with, uh, students and teachers. Uh, in 2020, 21, we're coming out stronger. We're obviously focused on the health and safety of our faculty, staff and students. Uh, we are, received very generous support from the federal government and the three stimulus bills. We were able to distribute $5.2 million of emergency funds to Madai College students. Uh, so very grateful for the support. Mr. Hurd?
Uh, I'm sorry, Dr. Maker, um, Dr. Cash, I did send the PowerPoint presentation over to, uh, Dr. Brown Hall and to yourself.
We're, we're just going to, we're just gonna ask Terrence if you wanted the power, or the PowerPoint loaded.
Yes, Dr. Maker, would you like to cut the PowerPoint loaded now?
Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you.
There we go. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks. You can scroll to slide three.
Slide three, please, Amir.
There we are. So yeah, here's our, here's our summary of where we are. Uh, we anticipate having a fiscal surplus coming out of the COVID pandemic stronger. Uh, and so we're looking to fund innovative ideas to grow, uh, academic programs and other partnerships around town. Uh, and the same thing for 2021, 22. Uh, our enrollment is looking as if it will not have missed a beat for the COVID pandemic, looking at enrollment numbers that are similar and higher to where they were in the fall of 2019. We will be having, with one little asterisk, we'll be having in-person classes for the summer and in the fall. The asterisk is while we're capable of having in-person classes this summer, the border to Canada is closed, and we have about 200 to 250 Canadian students who in good times would routinely cross the border on weekends to take graduate school programs in education. Um, next slide. I'm gonna turn it over now, uh, slide four. There we go. I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Michelle. I'll fill in for Sherry, and then I'll turn it over to Kenya to talk about the partnerships that we have with BPS through Say Yes, through Upward Bound, and through other avenues through, with Kenya. Michelle Sawyers, jump in.
Evening, everyone. Um, so we have had this wonderful partnership with Say Yes Buffalo for the past two years. Uh, in collaboration with the Bill Melinda Gates Foundation, we were able to support our Say Yes scholars. Uh, Madai College has accepted the most students into a private institution and amongst the partner schools that we have here in Buffalo. Um, so we have about 300 students, and looking and reflecting upon our Fall 19 data, uh, we brought in a class of close to 160 students. Uh, what we look to do is to provide that co-curricular support, high engagement for our students. So what does that mean? We are focused on persistence, retention and graduation. We would love to pick up, um, where the, um, the schools from the Buffalo Public School District, pick up where you left off so that we can continue to support those students and, and see what success looks like on our college campus. What does that entail? Uh, it's a brand-new department, and we have a team of advocates who will have those, um, crucial conversations with students um, to help them learn how to transition into college from high school because they've never been there before. So we will demystify the FAFSA. We will speak about, um, advisement. We will speak about how to understand the syllabus and things of that nature. Also, um, creating a, a peer environment to where they can connect with their fellow students. Uh, most of our students are first generation. Um, a lot of those students are immigrant and refugee. Um, and we have a, um, a wide diverse group of students who, um, are being exposed to this type of learning environment from different aspects. Um, and so what we look to do is to support that transition and all that entails. Also supporting what happens in the classroom with faculty because we want them to be successful as well and to build that relationship for our students. Thank you.
A couple of things that I'll say to, to do some shout-outs with, um, Madai College and the work that Michelle has done through Say Yes. Um, some of you might know Emmanuel Wright. Manny was a, is a McKinley High School graduate and is a student, a sophomore student now at Madai in criminal justice pre-law. Manny serves with me and with President Kotman and with Will Krestes on the operating committee. Manny, as a student of Madai College, represents all college students, uh, Say Yes students to the Say Yes Operating Committee Group. And, uh, I'm sure, uh, President Kotman and Will Krestes will, will attest to the, um, Manny's ability to speak with, uh, confidence and support the work that the operating committee is doing and, and challenge us on a regular basis, representing the voice of those students. Uh, our upward bound program is, is housed in the, uh, at MST School, but we work with students, uh, from other schools, other high schools as well. Uh, the upward bound programs at Madai consist of two, uh, traditional trio programs, upward bound classic and upward bound math-science. Uh, both programs are designed to provide supports and skills that will aid students in graduating high school and pursuing and completing an undergraduate, uh, course of study. Uh, again, working with them in the school at MST. Uh, upward bound math and science is designed to strengthen the math and science skills, uh, the participants there, um, with the goal of helping students to recognize and develop the potential to excel in various STEM, uh, science, technology, engineering and math fields, and encourage them to earn their degrees and seek careers in STEM fields, including teaching in the STEM fields. Uh, there are, there are a lot of financial support from the state of New York for, um, minority students to become teachers, to become science teachers, and then return to the, uh, to the city, uh, where they grew up and be science teachers in their school district. Hi, in terms of other initiatives, I'll turn it over to Kenya Hobbs, who's our Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, again, for the opportunity, uh, allowing us to share what we're doing related to diversity, equity and inclusion here at Madai College and, um, having the opportunity to collaborate with Buffalo Public Schools. I want to, at the very start, I want to just share one quick thing with you that is, um, uh, those of you who may be persons of faith and, and perhaps those of you who are not, are all, uh, uh, familiar with the concept of repentance, right? To repent, uh, the idea of, of apologizing for doing wrong or asking forgiveness for doing wrong. So I wanna turn that, uh, notion on its head and flip it a bit and, and say, I'm gonna pre-pent in my section. So I'm going to ask your forgiveness in advance, just in case I go over my allotted time. I hope that's all right with everybody, because we've got a lot of information to share. You know, we've got a quart of information that we gotta squeeze into a pint of time, but we're gonna get through it collectively. So let me share with you a little bit about how we approach DEI at Madai College. We look at it from three perspectives, uh, focused on policy, programming and our people. Obviously, people being our strongest, uh, allies and base. So what we do in terms of policy is we look to ensure that every policy that we're, uh, implementing or talking about or discussing goes through a vetting process where we utilize the racial equity impact analysis tool. And I'll share with you how easy it is to employ this tool and how we look at it so that we're ensuring that we are not inadvertently creating barriers for our students or negatively impacting our faculty and staff. That tool simply is comprised of these five questions, uh, and you'll hear them now. Uh, the first one is, are all racial, ethnic groups who are affected by the policy, practice and decision at the table? How will the proposed policy, practice and decision affect each group? How will the proposed policy, practice and decision be perceived by each group? Does the policy, practice and decision worsen or ignore existing disparities? And based on those responses, what revisions are needed in the policy, practice, decision under discussion? Now, we utilize that to help guide us in our policy development. That's the first P. The second P, talking about programming. From a programming perspective, we really, uh, try to ensure that we are holistically addressing our students, faculty and staff in terms of strengthening and growing an environment that provides more, uh, diversity and inclusive and welcoming, uh, sense throughout our entire campus. And the way we do this related to programming happens in several ways. As Dr. Maker alluded to, and my colleague Michelle Sawyers mentioned, uh, we work through Say Yes and, and the Gates programming with Buffalo Public Schools, but we also work through programs like, uh, Breaking Barriers, which Mr. Hurd is very, uh, familiar with and an active participant in. Uh, we also work with other community organizations that intersect, like Open Buffalo and, uh, the Buffalo Black Achievers, Inc., uh, Institute, as well as we contribute to trying to shore up the educational pipeline in partnership with you. So as students are transitioning from high school to college, that we're able to meet them at our front door and ensure that we retain them and get them through to graduation. So we co-create programming with our student body, uh, to address perspectives related to anti-racism as well as social justice initiatives. Just as, uh, a quick point to think about, we look at it from the perspective of not just, uh, what are the trending issues, but how are these real concerns and impacts affecting our student body, affecting, uh, those students that are coming to us in physical and, uh, socio-emotional ways so that we will have the necessary support to be able to address those concerns in real time? We also, this past fall, uh, were able to develop a series called, uh, Black Voices Matter, wherein we gave an opportunity and a forum for students on multiple occasions to dialogue about, uh, instances where they were able to express greater self-abolition and really talk about what their needs were and in a forum where faculty and staff, as well as administrators, could hear and respond and work with them to co-create, uh, programs and opportunities that would make them continue to persist along their educational journey. Another quick example, uh, of some of the work that we're engaged in in diversity, equity and inclusion includes, uh, an opportunity that we're doing at a cabinet level with our VPs and our directors, as well as faculty and staff throughout the Madai community, to have honest conversations about racially-charged, um, issues and perspectives with a particular and intentional focus on how is it that, uh, the role of white fragility, uh, plays in these conversations and how it might impede these conversations? and how it might impede these conversations? And we recognize that, you know, faculty and staff are the guardians of culture. So we want them to be embedded and bought into every process that we are rolling out in the efforts to make a better and more inclusive environment here at Madi. So it's a part of our daily work to make sure that it's not just something that we're just talking about, but we're walking it out in our everyday practices. And finally, we understand that people are the bedrock, the focus of all of the work that we do. And if it's going to be successful, it's important for us to establish a growing and healthy diverse environment. So to that end, we've done several things to address that issue. In fact, several months ago, we've had some openings here at Madi College, particularly looking at professionals out in the community who could serve in adjuncting opportunities. I had sent some information several months back to President Kotman about that just to see if there were any individuals within your sphere of influence that might want to come in and provide practical knowledge to our students in ways that would impact them in great ways to help them along their educational journey. So and we're really involved in investing in the professional development of our students and including a focus on inclusive pedagogy so that our students are seeing in real time the integration of diversity, equity, and inclusive practices that will help them as they matriculate through to graduation. Ultimately, what we're working towards is making sure that we have policies that are inclusive, programming that is welcoming, and ensuring that people have a sense of belonging here at Madi College. And we look forward to the opportunity to continue to partner with Buffalo Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. Dr. Maker?
Yeah, a couple of other things to decide that came down so I can just continue to chat because I've got it on my other screen so I know it's supposed to come next. One of the big things, this is the announcement that Mr. Hurd was talking about. One of the projects that we, or programs that we had. Want to give us, want to move it up a little bit, Amir?
Yeah, slide five, thanks. The next one?
Slide five, please, Amir.
There we go. The first line on this slide, the First Generation Payback Scholarship. We know that a large chunk of Madi College students are first-generation graduates, and that represents a lot of sacrifice and support of their families to get them through to that point. So what we have is this amazing scholarship program. We believe it is still the only one of its kind in the nation. If you are a first-generation Madi College graduate, then you have earned your parents, those people you list on your fastest, you have earned your parents a free tuition scholarship to Madi College. Again, if you're a first-generation college graduate of Madi, you've earned a free scholarship to Madi for those people who saw you through that time in their career. So we're very, very pleased with that opportunity. We currently have about 12 folks. It was announced two years ago. There are 12 participants in the program right now. Again, derailed because of the pandemic, but that's one of our, one of the things we try to do to support the community beyond just working with the individual students, figuring out a way to make it work for them. One of the things, the next scholarship program is unique. It came out of the COVID response. We know that a number of our students dropped out of college as good academically achieving students because they were the only person in their family, and Michelle Sawyer knows the real specific names and families. They were the only person who could find work for their family. And so the economics just didn't make sense for them to give up 50 hours, for example, at Amazon in order to go to school when the family had no income. So what we created was a Stay in Touch Scholarship. We told those students that if you want, if you can, please try. Take one class per semester at night, on the weekends, online, free of charge. Just one class, just to stay in touch with Madi until that time when you can come back and be a full-time student. Ways that we're trying to address the economic realities of so many of our student body. Buffalo Public School families that attend Madi College have a median family income of under $25,000. And so we know a little bit about some of the challenges that they face. Kenya mentioned the Racial Equity Roundtable. There are five working groups. You can see that we're actively serving in three of those. Many people also don't know, but we have a college-in-prison program at Albion College, or at Albion Prison, Albion College. We should rename it. Next slide, please. And then to talk about some of the innovative things that we currently have, we're the only regions, the region's only 3+3 program with UB School of Law. You go to school at Madi for three years. In your fourth year, you transfer up to the law school. Your first year of law school double counts as your fourth year at Madi College, thereby saving you a whole year of Madi College tuition. This program costs us one year of tuition because in that fourth year, they're up at UB Law paying UB Law School tuition rates. So we're willing to sacrifice a year of tuition if it means getting students through and through a law career even faster. Similarly, we're the only school in the region with a 3+1 program to the SI Newhouse School of Broadcast. It's a one-year program, so a student could go to college for four years, three years here, one year at SI Newhouse in Syracuse, and come away with a bachelor's degree from Madi and a master's degree from Syracuse. We do have the region's best Vet Tech program. That's not just me normally bragging, but we have an 80-some percent pass rate on the national Vet Tech exams. And we have the region's only esports management program. Next slide, please. In terms of innovation moving forward, we are slowly wanting an incubation of a project called MicroCollege. MicroCollege is a one-to-two-year intensive experience. We're launching it on our Rochester campus. And the reason we're doing it there and not in Buffalo is because it takes a lot of red tape with New York State Ed to get something like this up and running. So we're doing it kind of quietly and taking care of all that red tape on the Rochester campus this fall, this coming academic year. And we're going to look to roll that out in Buffalo in the fall of 2022. What it is, is a five-semester program whereby a student will go for three semesters. It's a trimester program. The student will take 12 credits each semester, but will borrow the scaffolding ideas of high school, where the student will be in the school building for 30 hours a week. And when they're not taking classes in, you know, 12 credits per semester, they're in small group tutoring sessions, making sure that they get through their first year. If they want to stay around for a second year and finish an associate's degree, that's within reach. If they want to matriculate up to a four-year degree and change, that's another plan as well. But the idea is, we know from data that the best predictor of college success is a student's first semester of grades. The partner that we're working with has done this very program out in Oakland, California, and they have turned students who had a 20% to 25% chance of graduating college into a student body with an 80% chance of graduating college. So we're very excited to work through the details and the bugs this coming academic year and then have a bigger launch in the fall of 2022 in Buffalo. We are investing in our athletic complex, which is down on Elk Street. Phase one is in, it's a full turf field with an athletic administration building. We are moving dirt on phase two, which is the middle of this picture, the baseball and softball diamond. Phase three will have grass fields, perhaps a box lacrosse facility. We are trying to partner with anybody who wants to use that. For the Seneca Babcock Community Center for Valley Community, we let them use that facility for free when Madi College is not on it. We've had conversations with the New York High School Athletic Association about hosting specialty softball tournaments since we could theoretically fit four fields, four games on at a time. Next slide, please. In terms of future programs, we're rolling out a really expanded digital media and entertainment. The esports business is a $12 billion industry. We have the region's only esports management program, but we're looking to expand the academic curriculum even further and be the premier leader in the esports, which is within the digital media and entertainment industry. Coach Rich Jacob, if you know the Park School, you know his success as a basketball coach. He is faculty, full-time faculty at Madi College. Ian Blair Lipsitz from Western New York Coaches just received a small grant from the Wilson Foundation, and we're looking at launching an international institute for coaching excellence. We have a biology faculty member who runs Western New York Raptors, a bird rehabilitation. And so we're looking at doing, launching more off of our Vet Tech program in how to do animal rescue and rehabilitation. And we're working with a longtime Buffalo native, Duncan Kirkwood, to talk about a resiliency curriculum as a major, as a minor, as a certificate program. These are some of the ideas that we're talking about in terms of funding through the surplus of funds that we're generating this year at Madi College for the future, for future programming. And there are some interesting things that will help every student in New York. Next slide, please. In the state budget, the state approved a $500 increase in TAP, which helps all students go to more schools. They also passed Pell for inmates, and that will begin in 2023, which means that our ability to continue to serve inmates in Albion Prison will expand, will have a long-term sustainable revenue flow to make that work. But the biggest one that I think is important for everybody is that Congress is giving serious conversation to doubling the Pell Grant. And if this happens, then that means that a high-need student in New York would have $17,000-plus of federal and state aid to go to any college they wanted in the state. And that's a game changer for not only the colleges, but it's a game changer for the student. Imagine, again, $17,000 of federal and state aid to go to any college you want. It's a voucher system. If you're a good fit for Stony Brook, it's much more possible because the tuition room and board is much more in reach with $17,000 of federal and state aid. At Madi College, your Say Yes students are already going to school tuition-free, which means because our fees are lower than the state system, it is cheaper for a Buffalo Public Say Yes student to come to Madi College for four years than it is to go to a SUNY or CUNY school. With a doubling of Pell, we're trying to do the math and sharpen pencils to see if we could accommodate that amount of money to support students coming to Madi, tuition fees, room and board for that $17,000. So we're very excited. We're actively involved in our National Association in Washington, DC as we're working to lobby for that key initiative, which is, again, a major game changer for every student in the country, every low-income student in the country. That concludes some of the stuff that we were intending to talk about. I believe the next one is just a blank Q and A slide so we can take down the deck. And the team and I will be more than happy to answer questions about what we're doing at Madi and the ways in which we're looking to partner with you.
Thank you, Dr. Maker. Right now, I'll open the floor for questions. Is there any questions about any of the programs or relationships with Buffalo Public Schools?
My good friend, Dr. Cash. Dr. Cash and I started at the same time, by the way, in 2015.
Dr. Cash?
You're muted.
Dr. Cash is still muted.
I started together as undergraduates in 2015, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. I wanted to commend Dr. Maker and his team for sharing with us this afternoon, this evening now. And certainly, we'd like to learn more about your programs. I know there's one of our former colleagues working closely with you about culturally responsive leadership. I think that's very important for teachers and administrators to become imbued with the skills and research associated with that set of skills and knowledge. And so we welcome a strong partnership around this, particularly as we go forward now, to help our young people. Anything that matches up well with our young people and their interests, we're certainly interested in. So thank you for a thorough presentation. You know, Dr. Will Karestis, our chief lead for intergovernmental affairs. Certainly, you and I have a relationship. And I had heard at one time you were going to start a center. It was either you or Kenishis, but something about a center for urban education. But you certainly, we want our area universities to get into the game, as we say, with our urban students. I don't, our survival, your survival, we're all connected here in Buffalo. So again, thank you for this and look forward to continued collaboration and learning more about these unique programs. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Cash. And to that, what I would say is, you know, we are, one of the things that we pride ourselves in, and because we're a private institution, we have a lot more flexibility, unfortunately, than some of our SUNY counterparts. I wish they had this flexibility we did as well. But we pride ourselves in customizing curriculum to meet the needs of our partners. We are, we've got our fingers crossed. One of our key strategic partners is actually GEICO. We have been offering programs on their campus in Clarence for 10, 15 years. Now that they've been working remotely, they're looking to consolidate their programs, the number of colleges that offer programs to them, from 58 down to three. And we're in the final hunts, we're excited. But one of the things we did for them is we asked them how they would like the curriculum tailored in order to best suit their needs. And so when there's a critical mass of interest, and this can be a short-term gig, we can do this for one year or two, or it could be a long-term, it can be a long-term relationship. But when we hear what you all need, then our faculty, who are amazing at creating curriculum, can be there to step up and co-create that curriculum experience that really is tailored to the unique needs, in this case, of Buffalo Public Schools.
Thank you. We'll stay here, we'll be in touch.
Deal.
I believe we have two hands up. It was President Phil Kotman and Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown. It'll go in that order.
Hugh, so I am so proud of Madi. I can remember from day one, when the Say Yes experience started, how you guys came to the plate and you started putting those supports in place and everyone else has since followed your lead. I am proud to report that I am a Madi alum. And I have not had a chance to find out what's going on at MST. I was at your opening ceremony, and I, so I've got some homework to do. But I appreciate your diversity, equity, and inclusion division. I was at that kickoff also, if I remember right. It's been a while ago, so so much, so much time, but so little time and so many respects. I have not shared with the board, but I have been appointed to the New York State School Board Association Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Board. And I was taking notes and trying to make sure that I'll be reaching out to you, Mr. Hobbs, and everyone here, Ken and Michelle, in regard to any ideas that you can give us to help move the state along to the degree that you guys have moved. And I will share with everyone, and this may be considered a commercial, that when I was looking for a school to finish my undergrad degree, Madi was a great fit because of your minimaster at that time. I don't know if you still have it, but I loved it. And because of how close and intimate the campus was. And so you guys have just done a phenomenal job supporting us. And I really would like to have a conversation about what we can do to support you. So you guys have opinions also about what we can do to help. And so I'd like to have that conversation with you real soon so that we can make sure that we make your lives or your jobs easier to help ours. that we make your lives or your jobs easier to help our student body. Thank you for everything you're doing. You're a blessing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. You know, one of the things, we're in the process of launching a new strategic plan, and my focus in this one, you were like, okay, for all these things, and we've all seen strategic plans, and sometimes they're as big as, you know, the New York City Library, and they sit there and they look great. But we tried to talk about, well, if there was only one thing we needed to worry about, you know, if we could focus just on one thing, what would that be? And we sort of settled in the president's cabinet on a goal of 2X. The idea is that the readiness of the average student who comes to Madi College is that with, you know, the old SATs and the high school scores and whatever, there was only a three-of-eight chance that a student coming in as a freshman would graduate from Madi.
Wow.
Again, you think about that income level, $25,000 for the family income, just as a snippet of all the other things that that student had to deal with. So our goal is to turn that three-out-of-eight predicted into a three-out-of-four actual.
Wow.
The idea is this, when we think about that, one, you have to think boldly and differently. You can't just get lucky for a year or two and have that happen. And it's going to take a lot of really hard work. Unfortunately, we have amazing people like Michelle Thoyers and Kenya Hobbs on the team driving a lot of these initiatives and driving the institution to look to introspect in ways where we getting in our students' ways. Now, here's the interesting thing about a 2X goal. The average starting salary of a Madi College grad is about $40,000, $45,000, which is not headline-making stuff, unless, of course, your family only has income of $25,000. And then it's making exactly the right kind of headline. Now, if we double the, if we double the graduation rate from three-out-of-seven to three-out-of-four, and you think about, out of, say, a freshman class of 400 students, okay? And you do that, you double the graduation rate for seven to eight years, then the economic impact of that starting salary compared to that family income, and you accumulate that difference over seven to eight years, the return to the community is over $100 million.
Wow. That's huge.
It's huge. Not only is it the right thing to do, but I've referred to this now as the social justice return on investment.
All right. That's great. And Black Lives Matter. What I'm hearing is Black Lives Matter. That's what I'm hearing, okay? I appreciate that. Children of color matter. I hear that. I appreciate that.
Dr. Maker, I have a recommendation. I'm hearing you talk about the Strategic Plan Committee that you're forming. I think that's important, especially now, looking forward. Things need to be re-engineered a bit, even if you had one before. I would, I have some really good, certainly several, right at the top of the head, top of my head, that I would recommend you invite to be part of that strategic planning because of what they've done in their school or, you know, with children that you're talking about wanting to increase the graduation rate with. So maybe a conversation, give me a call. I always think it's good to have as many good ideas about the population you're interested in affecting at the table as possible. Certainly, I would offer some staff, and when we get planning on this work that we talked about earlier in the evening, we'll reach out to you as well and see if you're interested in being a part of this, part of this community-wide work.
You know, when it comes to partnerships, we're really, you know, we like to think that we think differently. So it might not come as a surprise to many to know that one of the members of the Madi College Board of Trustees is a faculty member from the University of Buffalo, Nate Don Barnett, who is heavily involved in the Say Yes group. He does the FASTER Completion Project. He knows all his scholarship is with Promise programs, like the Kalamazoo Promise and the Say Yes Promise and so on. And so we said we should have this faculty member from the University of Buffalo on our Board of Trustees. And so he's been serving in that, now finishing up on his fourth year as a trustee.
Wow. Nate is good people.
Yeah. Dr. Evans-Brown, I think you had a comment or question?
Sure. I didn't have a question. I just have a comment. I too am a Madi alum. And yeah, so I mean, I really give you credit, Dr. Makar.
Maker. If my grandfather had done it right, he would have spelt it M-A-K-E-R, and then everybody would pronounce it right and spell it right.
Okay. Yeah, I want to commend you on your success. And what a difference. When I went to Madi, my God, it was nothing like what you described here. So I just wanted to commend you. I do encourage young people to look at Madi as an opportunity, and it certainly sounds like you're doing some good work with our school. So kudos to you and your team.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Are there any more questions? I don't see any more questions. Hands raised. So since there's no more question, I'll go ahead. And first of all, I'd like to say, you know, once again, Dr. Maker, I love our conversations and I always love to meet with you. And I really have no idea how you keep tracking your cohort because of all the programs you have with the University of Buffalo and Syracuse. So and the sacrifices you make to actually, you know, give up the last year of college, you know, to go on to another criminal justice program, a law program, that's amazing to me. And I don't know if anybody really understood, you know, the special scholarship program, you talk about your first-generation payback scholarship, and that's actually for a child that attends Madi College for four years and graduate from a Buffalo Public School, that their parent gets to go to college for free.
For free.
For a four-year period at Madi College. So with that type of thinking and ingenuity, you're building up the community. You're building up, you know, places, you know, where parents have failed at, or, you know, life happens and they couldn't continue with college or continue with graduation. And I remember when you first talked about, we spoke about two years ago, you know, about making it reality, you know, just congratulate you on these efforts. And I think that we need to bolster this out more because find a way to, you know, get this information to the community because that's a great opportunity for parents, you know, to be successful and, you know, and some of the dilemmas that they're in. We know that life happens, bills happens, you know, we have star families and, you know, and jobs. So the time for college is really, has really narrowed, but you have some very energy and some great ideas, doing ingenuity to try to promote education on their level and basis, you know, so they can succeed. So I'd like to thank you for that. I'd like to thank you, Mrs. Sawyer, you know, for a great presentation this evening, and also Mr. Hobbs, you know. I'll see you again over at the Breaking Barriers, and we continue on. And if any other questions, we know that you can, you know, go straight to the district and help bond these relationships. So I thank you for your time this evening, and also your work that you do at the prison. We also have some of our students that do into the criminal justice field, and maybe we can work together with those students also to try to find a bond. So thank you again.
Absolutely. Thanks. I appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
Okay. At this time, the Education Support Committee will turn it back over to the Student Achievement Committee with Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to present.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hurt. So this is the Student Achievement section. We're not going to take an excessive period of time. It is late. I was so glad to hear Dr. Cash talk about assessment of what kids' needs are in this district. And he's going to, you know, give us additional information next week, you know, about more data and where kids stand. But today, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Cash for an update as it relates to New York State Regents' Exams and Grade 3 through 8 plus test assessment. Dr. Cash?
Yes, thank you, Board Chair, Dr. Evans-Brown. Colleagues, it is such a delight to see the collegial collaborative professionalism of one of our newest cabinet members, Ebony Bullock. She's just phenomenal, and we're so pleased that she's joined us and learning her program of work rapidly. But just the epitome of what a great team player is all about. So she's going to provide in just two short slides, some of the information that I think you wanted to get at, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, for the community especially, about what is the status of these tests and high-stake tests that we're used to having every year in New York? Grades 3 through 8, element ELA in math, Regents' Exams, four or five Regents' Exams at every camp. What is going on this year with the continued disruption of COVID? So that's what she'll present and also address on the second slide, some of the questions and concerns that parents have had, while she also alludes to your resolution on March 17th that you as a board passed on this matter. So it's important for the public to realize that. All right. Ms. Bullock, as always, I know you're ready to go.
Good evening. Mr. Amir, if you could put up the PowerPoint, this is just a four-slide one that speaks to the assessments. Thank you. So good evening, Dr. Evans-Brown. Doctor, I just want to just give you a quick update. I won't keep you too long. And it really begins with your resolution that you passed on March 26th. That was our first communication to our state, in which we basically told our community that, Amir, if you can go to the next slide? Thank you. We affirmed for our community that our position, certainly this year, is that any assessment of our students potentially, it's not going to net us very much information, and it potentially could cause some undue stress. So our first communication was your resolution, in which we told our community that we affirm parents' right to not allow their students to participate in this year's assessment. The Office of Shared Accountability followed that up on the 26th of March, where we, again, communicated your resolution and also a parent letter explaining exactly what I'm going to talk to you about this evening. We do know that in the meantime, we have been waiting for the U.S. Department of Education to make a decision whether they were going to accept NICE's waiver request to cancel all New York State assessments. What we do know is we did not get that. The state did not, their waiver was not granted. But it does not change any of the things that we've communicated to our parents so far. And we've been communicating to our parents, get emails, phone calls. They called me. The memo that I sent out to parents listed my office number and my direct email, and I've been communicating with parents either by phone or email since right before the break. And they've offered some questions that I will get to in a second. But Dr. Evans-Brown, to your, one of your specific questions, you wanted to know specifically, what are the tests that are being offered? We are only offering the tests that we have to offer, so says the federal government. So we will be offering this spring, April 19th through the 27th, grades 3 through 8 ELA, book one only, and 3 through 8 math. Book one only, May 3rd through the 11th. Now, those windows, we're allowing schools to... Those windows, we're giving schools latitude to schedule kids how they see fit. But those are the windows. June 7th through June 11th, we will be offering grades 4 through 8 science. April 19th through June 9th, a big window, we'll be offering the NICE slot to our English-language learners. June 23rd, we will be offering Algebra I. June 17th, we'll be offering English Language Arts to the high school students. June 22nd, we'll be offering Living Environment, also known as Biology. All of the Regents' Exams, by the way, are offered in the morning. And then Earth Science, just the written portion, on June 24th. And when I say "offer" is just that. Our principals, they've done such a phenomenal job through this whole spring, communicating to parents what our plan is for assessments. And so they're basically calling parents or emailing parents and saying, we're offering these assessments. We will offer a safe place for your kids to take them if you choose. If they choose not to send their kids in, Amir, if you can go to the next slide? If parents opt to not have their parents, excuse me, their students participate in these exams, it's just a simple phone call or responding back to schools. And again, schools are calling and emailing. And if parents choose not to, their kids will not face any penalties. Again, just to reiterate, if parents or community members who are watching, if you have any questions, you can call me directly at 816-3035, or you can email me at ebullock@buffloschools.org, and I respond very quickly to your questions. Amir, when you get a chance, I just need you to go to the next slide. So the calls and the emails that I've received from parents, they have been really centered on three big questions. Amir, are you able to advance?
Lou, can you check on Amir?
Yeah. I did. He's working on, for whatever reason, it's not advancing on our screen.
Okay. So, so the first big question or concern, and it's a question, right, that parents want to know, thank you, Amir, is around the participation. And I've gotten calls, hey, Ebony, what's going to happen if I decide to not allow my child to participate in the 3 through 8 or the Regents' Assessment? And what I want the board to know, what I want our parents and community members to know, there will be no penalty, none, none whatsoever for kids. And additionally, we've heard concerns about, well, will my principal get in trouble? Will the school be penalized? Schools are not going to be penalized at all. The state, in fact, or excuse me, the federal government, in fact, said that there will be no accountability, penalties towards schools or towards districts. And principals, in their communications with parents, they're not doing a hard press. They're not saying you must bring the kids in. What they're saying is, we're going to offer a safe place for your child to take this assessment, should you choose, because you are the person, parents, family, caregivers, you are the ones that get to have that say. We are not going to bash the assessments because we're educators and we were not going to do that. But since the federal government is saying we have to give them, we will offer a safe place, should parents, should parents choose to, you know, allow their children to participate. The next big question around this, well, you know, Ebony, my child is, you know, I'm choosing, I'm in that 40%, where I'm saying I'm just not comfortable yet sending my child in. They're 100% remote. Do I have to bring my child in? And the answer is no. The state government said that we do not have to test children who are participating in 100% remote learning. Again, we're leaving it up to their parents. If their parents want them to participate in the 3 through 8 assessments, the NICE slot Regents, again, parents will bring, they will make arrangements to have their children brought into the school. If that is their wish, and again, we'll give them a safe place to do that, much like what we did today across our district with the PSATs. Parents bring their children in at the conclusion of the test, parents have, make arrangements to have their kids be picked up after the assessment. But again, no pressure, no hard press. We're leaving it up to parents to make that decision. And then finally, the last concern, again, themes that, questions and concerns fell under, was, well, what happens next year, Ebony? Will my child have to retake these assessments next year? And the answer again is no, we're not going to penalize students and families, okay? Students will not be required to retake any of these assessments that they did not participate in this year. In the case of students who participate in Regents' Exams, they will be awarded a credit. They need to complete all of their coursework and pass the class. And what will appear on their transcript is the letter E for exempt. And what we know for sure is that the exemption will count towards a student's graduation. And again, students will not be penalized because they did not take these assessments. And that's the big message. Schools won't be penalized, our district won't be penalized. Schools won't be penalized, our district won't be penalized, and our students will not be penalized. Instead, we will continue assessing, finding out what kids know, what they're able to do. We're going to continue to make sure that we support their social emotional growth and health and look forward to a great summer as a bridge to push them on to greater and bigger learning in the fall. And we're going to move on towards the 2020, the 2122 school year. And this is your 2021 Spring Assessment Update. I'm open for questions. Amir, you can take the slide deck down now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ebony.
Thank you, Ebony. I see a hand up, President Sharon Belton Cotman. Sharon, unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. So I just need some clarity here because I, I think the rhetoric in the community is that, um, uh, that these, uh, tests that they are taking from the state will tell where the children are. When do you, where they are, what they have not learned? When do we get these results back typically if, if we take a state test? Is this something that's given back to us within a reasonable time so that, uh, the teachers can utilize it to move children to the next level? Or would, explain that to me because I'm a little, um, um, I'm a little confused as to how these tests are used versus the tests that you are currently using within the building.
So, um, the way the various measures that we are using currently in the building work, they, they help to inform instruction. So kids are taking a DBA or they're, they're going into Mobi Max, they're doing one of those predictive assessments. And it, teachers are then allowed to say, okay, so I know that Ebony knows X amount of content or skill right now. And that will help me plan what they need to do, what she needs to do tomorrow or next week. We typically, and I'm gonna, um, ask my colleague Anne Baracelli to correct me if I'm wrong. We typically get New York State assessment or Regents data late in the summer, right? A lot of us refer to it as like autopsy data. It's, this is what they learned all year, period. Um, and so then we, we, we do some item analysis and it gives us some indication of what kids know and can help the next year's teacher plan for the upcoming school year. Um, but generally, our teachers have been, they've just gotten so much training and they're, they're being, you know, engaged in such, um, work around DDI right now with the things that we have, we're using now. Again, Anne Baracelli, correct me if I'm wrong. The measures that we're using now give us, uh, 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 they're going to give us, they're going to net us because I know as Dr. Cash said, we are building a system right now that's going to help us give us exactly that answer where kids are right now. So they're using all of the things that Anne Baracelli said we're using and we'll be able to give you that answer right now. Using just the Book One of the ELA and the math, I can't say it has no value, but it, it will not give us the questions or will not answer the questions that we need answered now because we won't get it until the end of the summer. So we need to know now. And so the things that we have in place now, the Mobi Max, the Myon, those are the measures we need to be looking to, to answer those questions. And to help us set up, who needs what over the summer? Who needs a deeper dive? Who needs to be pushed on? We, we, we ought not wait or rely on those Regents outcome, or excuse me, the Regents and the three through eight outcomes. They won't give, they won't get, we won't get the information back in time.
Okay, so if I'm remembering right, there was a period of time where, uh, New York, uh, changed their assessments. I'm not quite sure when that was. I want to think it was somewhere around 215 or whatever. And there was a movement, uh, by the suburban parents, uh, not to allow their children to be tested because they didn't feel that they, they had a fair chance, that they had been given, that the exams were correct. I think it was under, um, uh, that change in curriculum, uh, was it, I can't remember, no child left for home or something. It's been a while in my mind, so. But the point I'm, what was it? The, the point I'm making is, is that why would I, as a parent, take the state assessment when the, uh, when you can have the information, uh, uh, assessed by your teachers locally? I'm just trying to figure out, is this information shared with parents, uh, of what's going on with their child, uh, on a day-to-day basis or in the? Is that, is that happening?
So that's a, yeah, so that's a big question. And so let me say this, um, traditionally and literally up until about a week or so ago, or two weeks, a week ago, when, uh, we found out that the United States government is not going to allow us to waive, uh, waive out of assessments this year, um, our funding was tied to it, long story short, right? So the district, if we didn't hit a certain participation rate, some of our funding would have been impacted. So that's part of it. Um, secondly, I think that, um, our community culturally believes and if our kids go to school, they take the test, they do what the teacher tells them to do. So I think it was some cultural, um, aspects behind it. And I think that we just need to think differently. Again, they have a purpose, but for that day-to-day sort of dipstick, where are the kids now? Where are they right now coming out of COVID? How can we help them? How can we move them forward? How can we support them? We should be relying on the tools that we have, um, at our hands, at our disposal right now.
And these state tests, these are the ones that typically people say the children are, uh, being taught to, uh, take the test, teaching to the test. Is that not right?
Um, I've heard that statement. Yes.
I've heard that statement in the past. And I'm, I'm just curious to know if that's the assessment where they were talking about.
Well, can I make a comment?
Sure.
So there's a couple of just points to make, uh, here about these, uh, tests in New York in particular. These are what we call high stakes. They're supposed to be criterion reference tests. Um, I don't think they're very good at that, but they're supposed to be aligned to the standards in the state and ostensibly aligned to what teachers are teaching to the students. But they're supposed to be aligned. Um, that needs to be examined because you'll find that often because of pacing and because of other challenges with different populations of learners, particularly with complex needs of our students, the pacing guy, the pacing guide has no relation to where our teachers actually get to with different groups of students. So you end up getting tested often on material that you haven't even been instructed upon, uh, yet in that year. So this notion that if you take the test, it'll tell you where you are, is pretty much, um, a false, a false rhetoric, and it's a rhetoric. And it's especially true in New York State. Uh, this is an area of expertise for me. And here in New York State, if you look back over the last 12 years, I showed you this in a graph, colleagues, in one of our board work sessions. These tests have changed four times, four times over the last 12 to 15 years. And each time, kids start to grow and start to come up. They change standards or they change, uh, what we call items on the test that kids are getting a lot of them right. And they change that and then score dip again, and then we climb, we climb, and then they change it again. It's not designed for kids to succeed on. I'm going to be real honest with you. And it's especially not designed for, uh, poor children, children of color, uh, in this state to do well on. The whole state isn't doing well on it. The whole state, white, orange, yellow, green, black, brown students, your average is 31, I'm sorry, 39%. 41% of the students get Level Three on this test. 39% of the students in the whole state. And all you hear in the rhetoric is Buffalo, 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 Buffalo. It's egregious. And everybody buys that nonsense. And here's another one. I didn't know this until recently. This is, I never heard of this in any state. Teachers grade the test.
Stop.
Teachers grade the test. You don't take a state test that's designed for everyone to be as standardized as possible and have tens of thousands of teachers grade it. Right there, you're going to get into variability differences that are extreme. And all kind of bias is going to get into that. And we don't even know how schools that we're not in charge of read in between the lines, how they set up that process. Because you can rig that process. And so it, it needs to be examined and it needs to be overhauled. What you need is what we call good, solid stat, uh, instruction-based assessments that are aligned to the state's standards. These tests are aligned to whatever the producers of the tests are, uh, put, put the money into it to, to develop. And they often aren't aligned. They all say they're aligned to the state standards, but the, the evidence shows otherwise. And so this year, we're only going to give multiple choice portion of the test. That's what Book One means. And multiple choice is, you, you can't make good inferences, uh, out of it. Very difficult to design a really, really well-designed multiple choice question. I've seen these questions. They are not well-designed. Several answers could be plausible. And kids often choose one that looks plausible when you read the stem. And then it's wrong. And so what are you really measuring? You're measuring the ability to guess the right answer. Research shows that if you choose B, just choose B all the time, you'll get more than 50% of the, of the answers right on a multiple choice test. So I don't see what inference you can make about what kids have learned or not learned this year and next, you know, during the COVID time. I'm all for it when we get a really good, standards-aligned test that measures what teachers have taught, especially if teachers have taught it well. And if they can kind of keep pace, hopefully they can keep pace and kids can keep up, keep pace. But short of that, you're getting what you can get. And I don't know how a state, a whole state can say that 39%, 41% pass rate is good and then still bemoan, lament, chastise, castigate Buffalo Public Schools coming in at around half that. See? Because all of that is, is poor. And it's, and it's so poor that you ought to, something's either wrong with the test or something's wrong with all the students in New York State. And that's been going on for a long time. A long time. And I've just sat and watched you, uh, look at it and this Ed Trust and all those groups make it like it's the linchpin of education here. And frankly, it does a disservice to, to all of the children. And you go out and take that high-stake test and you, you judge kids by it, you judge the school by it, you judge the school system by it. And it has very little to do with much about what makes for good schools, for good teaching, and for good learning. That all needs to be, uh, be tossed out. And then in terms of the Regents exam, very quickly, I'm not opposed to a good Regents exam, but some kids are consistently failing Region exams, but they're passing the course. So now where's the alignment there? How do you pass the course and fail the Regents exam? There's something that needs to be examined there, uh, for alignment and validity and so forth. So I just want you to challenge the narrative that every time Buffalo, uh, doesn't do something what the, what is perceived as, as well, then you take the full brunt of that as if nothing else is occurring in the state. There's, there's hardly anybody in the state scoring 75 or above on these tests. Anyone, any school, anyone, anywhere, suburb, anywhere. City honors is 50% in math in some of the grades on this thing. And that's our best flagship academic school. So I just think it's time to, while we're in this COVID disruption time, to look at this, challenge the premise of it all, uh, and start to eat, to develop better tests, but also figure out multiple ways to assess student progress and student development.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. That was a very good overall overhaul and analogy of, of, uh, these tasks. And you're absolutely right. I used to work as, uh, a substitute teacher and I've, I continue to say is teaching to the task. And you're absolutely right. When these kids take these tests, that there's always something on there that they weren't taught in the classroom. So I don't know where, who make them up, who designed them, but they do need to be overhauled. So this is our time. Any other, uh, questions, comments before I end? Okay, Anne, I knew you had something, Dr. Rivera. Go ahead.
I'll be as brief as possible, just a really brief comment to amplify what Dr. Cash is saying. We can't confuse accountability with high-stakes tests. You can be accountable without high-stakes tests. Or you can have high-stakes tests in a portfolio of accountability. We need to think about that more and I heartily support that.
Uh, Jen? Board member Jen McCoskey?
I think that there's also.
Thank you, Anne. That was good.
The, there's also, in fact, if you want to put these tests in place where you're trying to, you know, assess academic achievement, you should also have, if we're looking at a whole child approach, which is happening across the country in which what we're doing, then there has to be something of the equivalent on a national level for aptitude for, you know, for other, other things other than just your academic skills. And, you know, I mean, you, you have a bad day, you take the test and, and it, it, it just, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't, it, it doesn't nowhere near depicts what a whole child is worth or what they can bring to the table. It's actually demeaning in my eyes, so that's how I feel about it.
Absolutely. Dr. Ebony Bullock, thank you so much for that presentation. Um, any other last thoughts, comments?
No, I just thank you for, um, allowing me to present. And I want to tell you that, um, we're going to continue to just, um, message that, um, parents get the right to choose whether their children, um, participate in these assessments. And, um, I can be reached at ebullock@buffaloschools.org for any parent or community member that has a question about these assessments.
Okay, thank you for that. And if nothing else, have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Bullock.
Sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Fine, have a good night, everybody.
Excuse me, excuse me. We still have, um, someone waiting for educational support.
Oh, okay.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
I'm, I'm very apologetic, um, to, uh, Mr. Patrick, um, Matt, Madden, uh, who's supposed to present tonight, um, under, um, Dr. Tangier Woods. Uh, the second part of educators' support was the, um, uh, something that I believe back in 2018, 2019 that the board voted upon was analysis and reporting, uh, of our Buffalo Public School, uh, children. And it was, it was the, it was the YRBS, the, the Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance, uh, which talks about our data and summary and trends. It also shows the data and. and documentation of, of the test that was done here in Buffalo and the overview of our, of our health and, um, strategies that we should take. So at this time, um, well, the test, so you, so you quickly understand it, it talks, it talks about, uh, uh, injuries and violence that's happened to our kids, the use of tobacco, um, alcohol, um, drugs, sexual behaviors, all the way from dietary behaviors, physical activity, obesity, overweight, that's, that our children are dealing with and issues, and other health topics and concerns that, well, I don't know if the COVID was, um, part of this or not, or had been adapted to it. But at this time, I'd like to bring in Dr. Tangier Williams to introduce the speaker today. And once again, um, Mr. Madden, for, um, you being our guest and having to wait for so long, uh, it was a very busy schedule today and a lot of important things that we was going through. But I believe this is one of the most important things that we can actually talk about today. It talks about our fam- our family, our trends, our students, um, things our teachers deal with in the classrooms. So, so please, everybody, take the time to listen to this report. Uh, it's been going on for two years. Thank you.
Okay, it has been a very long night, and I'm not going to, um, belabor things. I do just want to echo what Board Member Heard shared, that this is, uh, very important, um, data. Um, you know, it's, it's a survey that helps the district to generate dollars.
It helps us to guide wellness practices in schools, to facilitate who we partner with.
You know, it guides policy. Um, it helps us with individually developing plans for our schools. Ultimately, what it does is it allows us to assess the social, emotional wellness and needs of our children. And during this unprecedented time, um, that's extremely important. It's an evidence-based way to do it. Uh, the survey has been created by the CDC. Um, it was, began, I believe, in nineteen ninety. We administered the survey in twenty nineteen and then COVID hit. So what we have from this data is going to be some really robust pre-COVID data. We will be again administering the survey, um, this coming October, when, you know, after our children have experienced a pandemic. So we're going to have some really good, um, almost pre and post data on where our children were prior to, um, COVID hitting and where they are as they have had some experience with it. So with that being said, um, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Patrick Madden. He's the Executive Vice President of the Market Decision Resort, Research Organization. And I'm not sure if we still have Mai when I know that she has a soccer game tonight. So she may not be able to stay. She's our Director of Social Emotional Wellness. But I will allow, uh, Mr. Madden to take over at this point. And if there are questions afterwards, then I will entertain them. Thank you.
Well, uh, thank you very much. Uh, I'm happy to be here. Um, can you hear me okay? Sounds like you can. Um, I do have a, um, a slide deck if you're willing to pull that up. Very brief, and I'll keep it brief. I know it's getting late. So I will not belabor this. We'll keep it, uh, we'll keep it fast-paced. Uh, and this is really just a progress update on where things stand. Uh, we're actually in, in, in the middle of the project right now. Uh, so I'll talk just really briefly about, about, uh, the background of the project and where things stand and show you a little bit of data. Uh, so we just finished analysis. This isn't actually a presentation of the data itself, uh, but it is a presentation just about, uh, sort of, uh, where things are and next steps. So you can move to the next slide. Uh, just a little bit about, you know, who we are. I'm sure you've never heard of us before. Uh, we're a public health research and evaluation firm, really specializing in health and adolescent research. Every, everything from maternal-child health through, uh, a survey like the YRBS. Uh, and we do that around the country. So we actually are currently the, uh, vendor collecting data on the YRBS in three states, uh, for Rhode Island. We've been doing that since the mid-two thousands. Uh, we do, we conduct the Virginia Youth Survey, which is the statewide RBS in, YRBS in Virginia, as we're, as well as in twenty twenty-one, we're going to be doing the one in Maryland. So, uh, we have a lot of experience with the YRBS, which I think is why I'm here today. Uh, also supported by a great team. So I, I'm working with a great team of analysts at the company. They're really doing all the work. Uh, also really want to thank Mai and the rest of the, uh, the YRBS, uh, sort of implementation team at the district. It's really a collaborative, uh, sort of working environment. Um, and it's really been sort of a great experience working with them. So I think we're going to produce some really great results and data for the district, uh, sort of working together on that. So I can move to the next slide. A little bit of the project, uh, background, uh, you know, as is mentioned, really, this is a survey to provide the district, um, with data, health data, really to help plan, uh, policy, help plan for health promotion strategies that not only improve the health of students, which is obviously important, but actually improve the academic achievement of the students as well. And there's actually a lot of research that has been done that has linked, uh, health, uh, the, you know, the health of a student community with those academic outcomes. So, and a healthier student body actually has been shown to produce better academic outcomes, uh, have better attendance, um, things like that. So health is not only important in and of itself, it will also lead to hopefully better academic outcomes. And I think one of the really cool things about this project is that third bullet, the bottom. So we're actually, as part of this, providing individual schools with their own data back from their, from their student body. Uh, so each individual school gets specialized data, uh, specific to the school that will help them plan, uh, their own, um, you know, policy and procedures based on the data for their school, uh, which is really important because obviously every school's different. Every school has their own challenges, uh, of course. And there's going to be a lot of data and a lot of information that's being produced out of this. Uh, you know, we're, we're providing the district with the, with the actual clean data files, uh, high-level district reports, uh, that are going to provide recommendations district-wide. Uh, and as I mentioned, school-based reports are actually going to provide recommendations for each school. And built into that is actually technical assistance, uh, for us to actually help schools interpret the data, uh, what it means and what to do with it, uh, which is really cool. And, you know, the big question comes up, well, why are we talking about night twenty nineteen data in twenty twenty-one? Uh, the short answer to that, uh, is COVID. Uh, not only did it derail, uh, school systems, it also derailed research. Uh, so there was definitely a delay in actually getting this project up and running, uh, which is unfortunate. Uh, but we're still providing, I think, a lot of good and useful data, uh, to the district and talk about that, uh, in a couple slides. So, uh, you can move on. Uh, also really quickly mention a couple improvements, uh, to the two thousand nineteen survey. So we always want to make the work that we do better. I can't take credit for this. Uh, my organization actually didn't collect the data. That was done by the YRBS implementation team at the district. So they did a great job collecting data. Uh, they made improvements to the actual survey administration, hopefully to improve data quality and reduce the amount of missing data, uh, in the survey. It is a very long survey. Uh, so what happens sometimes is students don't answer the whole thing. Uh, they get sort of tired of doing it. So, uh, there are steps taken to hopefully reduce that in twenty nineteen. We're actually in these reports for twenty nineteen, adding in, in addition to the survey data, adding in, uh, additional administrative data on academics, on school climate, on things like that. Again, to hopefully better link back, uh, the, these really important health come, outcomes with academic achievement. And again, helping schools to really understand what's going on there and linking those really important aspects of it. So, and that'll be the first time that that's done is in two thousand nineteen. And we're also weighting the data for the first time by school enrollments, uh, which actually is something that hasn't been done, uh, up until now. But it does align with the CDC protocols, and it's what the CDC recommends that, uh, that states and districts do when they conduct the survey. And the reason to do that is it improves overall representativeness. And what we find is that schools, particularly in, um, you know, low SES regions, uh, so poorer schools in, in, in minority communities tend to have lower response rates overall. And we want to make sure that the results reflect those schools just as much as they do in the wealthier school districts. And that's why we weight the data. So you can move on to the next slide. Uh, really quickly, and this just goes back to, I think, to the wonderful job that was done collecting the data. Um, what we're seeing is we have data on over six thousand at the district level, over six thousand middle school students. Uh, and there was a ninety-one percent response rate. So ninety-one percent of all of the students in the district actually completed the survey. That's amazing, actually. Uh, and it's up from eighty-six percent in two thousand seventeen. And at the high school level, we have data on over seven thousand high school students, and that's a seventy-five percent response rate, up from sixty-nine percent in two thousand seventeen. And as, as I've been told, this is actually the first time ever that every school that's participated has had over a sixty percent response rate, which is sort of the CDC cutoff point for providing data back. Um, and so this is the first time ever that all schools that participated will actually get an individual report. So really great job collecting the data, making sure schools participate. I know a lot of hard work went into that. So really kudos there. You move on to the next slide. Uh, I think you want to move forward. I think that's backwards. Uh, you guys, you can go one more? Uh, can you go ahead one more slide? There we go. So as I mentioned, this is not a, a presentation on the data itself. Uh, but we did just finish analysis. So I thought I'd fold in, uh, sort of what we're seeing in terms of a little bit, a few data points. This is a survey of over a hundred questions. So we have a ton of data. Uh, but here's just a few selected indicators. And I just want to sort, so sort of show you what themes are going on. And I think overall, it's really good news, uh, in terms of the district. And what we see, I think, in general, is a continued, um, trend in the positive direction for many of these indicators. So when we look at something like current alcohol use, so that's, um, students who ha- have had at least one drink of alcohol in the past thirty days, that's actually declined from two thousand seventeen down to under twelve percent. And that's significantly lower, uh, than the state level of over twenty-six percent. So, um, much lower than what you're seeing at state and on the decline. Same thing with binge drinking. Uh, we also see the same thing with current cigarette use and vaping use, too. Uh, again, that's made a lot of headlines with youth vaping use. Um, there's been a crisis in terms of, uh, that. It's, uh, extremely dangerous, a lot of unknowns there. But, uh, the vaping rate in, uh, the district is seven point two percent for two thousand nineteen, uh, which is significantly lower than what we're seeing, uh, at the state level overall. Now, there's one area, if you look at, you know, current marijuana use, that's one area where, uh, things aren't quite as good overall, but, um, they're sort of on the level as what you see in the state. And then one area I just wanted to point out was with regard to physical activity. And we sort of heard a little bit about that earlier, where things are actually trending in the positive direction. So, uh, that last item says, you know, students who are not physically active on it for at least sixty minutes a day, five days of the past week. And those are the CDC recommendations for physical activity, uh, for youth. Um, and so what we're seeing is sixty-three, almost two-thirds of students in two thousand nineteen actually don't meet those physical activity requirements. Uh, and that's up from two thousand seventeen. It's also a little higher than the state overall. So again, there's definitely issues around getting kids active, getting them out. Uh, that's always a challenge. I can move on to the next slide. Uh, middle school level, we see a lot of, uh, the same results overall. Uh, again, when we look at vaping use, uh, really, really, really positive results overall. Uh, the current vaping is of three percent, uh, which you, of course, want to see that at zero, uh, but it is significant improvement from two thousand seventeen. It's also, uh, less than what you're seeing at the state level. Again, with marijuana, that's, uh, a little higher than what we see at the state level. Also a very slight, although non-significant increase. So, uh, again, that's something I think to consider overall. And then again, we see the same trend with physical activity among middle school students as we do with the high school students. All right, next slide. There's a lot of data here, but I heard that, um, that, um, people would be interested in this. So, um, these are, uh, the questions on adverse childhood experiences. So questions that really get around issues of abuse and neglect that, uh, children experience. And these scale is based on the CDC Adverse Childhood Experience, uh, questionnaire, uh, which is conducted nationally, uh, modified a little bit for, you know, the district itself. But what we can see overall is that, um, you know, youth, both at the middle school level and the high school level, are really experiencing a lot of child, adverse childhood experiences. And that includes like, things like sexual violence and sexual abuse. That includes, you know, parental abuse. That includes, uh, you know, living situations that are, that are not ideal, um, and neglectful in some cases. Um, and as you can see here, you know, where you have, um, about a quarter of students that they actually said, you know, live with somebody who has served time in prison. Things like that. Overall, um, I, we haven't calculated yet, but I'll just say two things that generally, when you, when you add it up, um, from what I've seen, it could be upwards of about two-thirds of students actually have experienced one or more of these, uh, what we call aces. So again, there are issues that affect, uh, a lot of kids in the district, and they're linked to a bunch of negative outcomes and negative risk factors. So what we see is kids who experience adverse child experiences are, do worse academically in school, they're less likely to graduate, they have worse, worse health outcomes. You know, there's a whole bunch of, um, sort of associated correlated, uh, negative factors associated with that. So again, um, there could be a focus, I think, in talking about how we can work on these and improve these overall. Uh, another thing we see, you know, positive note about this is actually, these questions were asked, and part of these questions were asked in two thousand seventeen. And we can see that there's actually been a slight this decline at the high school level in terms of a few of these, uh, by a few percentage points. So again, really positive news. Uh, while it's still a huge issue, uh, things are going in the right direction overall. And another thing, we haven't, and we haven't looked at the data yet or have time to look at the data yet, uh, by things like race. Uh, but what we generally find is that, you know, among black students, among Hispanic students, that, uh, levels of aces are higher overall, significantly higher overall among those groups, uh, than they are amongst, uh, group, you know, like white students. So again, that's an issue that, uh, we'll continue to analyze the data with and report on as of yet. And so, uh, and then, I think I have one more slide. And just to sum it all up, you know, where things currently stand, uh, again, we didn't actually get started on this until January, uh, again, due to a delay in, uh, COVID and contracting and all of that stuff. But things are moving along really quickly. Again, want to thank, thank the, you know, the team we're working at, uh, at the district, which has been awesome. Uh, we have gone through the analysis, just completed that. Uh, we are on track to provide reports at the district level, uh, sometime in May, hopefully. And we're actually ahead of schedule. So we've been developing the school-based reports at the same time. So we're actually ahead of schedule there. And we can likely provide those school reports at the same time as we're providing the district ones. So hopefully we'll get this all wrapped up, uh, sometime in May will be the goal. But that's it. I appreciate your time. I know it's late. So thank you for listening to me. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions now or, um, or later if you have any, um, as well. That's absolutely fine.
Thank you. Edmire, if you could, um, remove the PowerPoint so that we can address questions?
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Madden. Right now, uh, open the floor up for any questions. And I believe the first one we have is, uh, the Superintendent, Dr. Cash.
All right, Patrick, thank you for the presentation. Colleagues, I, I think this data will be one key piece of data that we were alluding to earlier, when we said we need to begin assessing our students' academic and social, emotional learning needs now, as we start to consider how we'll use, uh, this, uh, federal stimulus investment. So Patrick, it is useful that we have at least some sense of the twenty nineteen. But I agree with Dr. Williams as well, that, uh, A, will you be the company that does it in the fall? And if you are, can you do it faster? Can you get it, can you get it to us sometime within that first half of the year next year? So that we can, uh, get that data. Now that they've experienced almost a year and a half of COVID, I, I suspect that some of this data that is, that is high will go even higher. And let me give you the example. The example on, families who swear, put me down, um, or are abusive to me verbally, uh, and physically, that data, we, I, I don't know. I'm hoping not, but I, I anticipate that that'll go even higher. And it's already at one-third of our students. See? And then that next one, which I've seen since I've been here, which is just, uh, really high for a small city like this. And that is the percentage of students who have seen, who have seen, not heard about, who have seen someone get shot, beaten, or stabbed. That is trauma, colleagues. I don't care how old, what, how old you are, what age, that's trauma one time. But if you've seen it often, it's, it's all but debilitating, particularly without treatment. And too often, our children don't get the treatment they need for that kind of repeated exposure. We had a student a couple of years ago. She said twenty-four of her friends or family and- 24 of her friends or family and relatives, she was 17 years old, have been killed and murdered violently. 24 of her friends or family members. And that's too much in our small town to have one in three of our students face that kind of trauma on a regular basis. So you can bet that this is going to be a key piece of data and information that we're going to need and use to provide even greater and stronger supports for our young people. So I appreciate your work. I hope you're the organization that does it for us in the fall. And the information together between 2019 and 2021 will be very powerful and very useful because of the high rate of participation, the high response rate. Now, two quick other questions. Why don't we have data on tobacco use for the state? And I'm just doing this from memory. I thought I saw a blank on the state. We weren't too bad locally, but I didn't understand why you wouldn't have that data for the state. And then the only other question I have is colleagues, that first slide that Patrick and his team showed had a lot of our students in a directional level that's positive. It's very positive. And Sharon, you know, I feel you, we got to let these, these same narrative clarion blowers start being advocates for the things that their children and the families are doing a really good job with. You have, you're way below the state on some really significant indicators of, of bad youth behavior. Almost that whole front page. And I never hear about it. I never hear about it. Never talk, never hear anybody talk about it, don't see a report on it. Don't see Ed Trust putting us out there for being, doing a great job.
Investigative post.
Investigative post? What a sorry piece of journalism that is. Just sorry. Level one. Level one. I wouldn't use it for fire, to start a fire. I'm just talking to you now. You got to stop letting people who sat by the door, you understand what I'm saying, denigrate your children over and over and over and over again without penalty. Without penalty. These are your kids. You one degree of separation from everybody in Buffalo. Whether you live on Phyllis Street or whether you live on Duckton or Southampton, wherever you live, you one degree of separation from, from each other. And I've never been, I've been all over the country. I've never seen the city itself put its children down. Never seen it. You got precious children here. You got talented children here. You got resilient children here. They're tough. They've been through all of this. They haven't complained. But everybody else is. Everybody else put us down. Our kids had a record-breaking graduation rate last year. First time in history at 76.3, period. And all these cowards did was put it down, talk about it, we must have cheated. Couldn't be true. And guess what? You just heard Ebony say exemptions are a way of life now. That's part of what you get. But our exemptions weren't any higher than anybody else. In fact, they were right in here and lower, lower than most of the other big five districts. Who allows that crap to stand? I don't. But I'm not from here. But I'm, I'm biding my time before I go down and have my meeting with the Buffalo News. That new group that's down there. That's a new group down there. And you got the same usual suspects partnering up with anybody that will put our kids down and put your school system down. I've never seen nothing like it in my life. So that's why we're going to lead this agenda. That's why we're going to use empirical, accurate data to help us frame the work that's needed. And we're going to engage thousands and thousands of other parents and community members who believe in their children and who want our partnership to help them get to where they need to be. And that's what we're going to commit to. That's what we've always been about. But you got to help me. You got to help me and don't play both sides of the fence and all over and think that they really care about you. They don't care about you. They don't use you. They're going to use you up. Trust me, it's already a plant of foot to get rid of you. They want you to drive me out. And by the way, I'm gonna go when I'm ready. I'm just telling you that. You get your five votes if you want me gone, and then we can talk about it. But they ain't driving me out. They don't have the qualifications to stand next to me. Not even close. Nowhere near. So we're going to help our kids and the ones that really, really want the help, the families that really, really want the help. And we're going to use organizations like this right here to share the data. We're going to take it apart, and then we're going to build programs to support them to help overcome the significant indicators that are showing up on this survey. So I applaud Mr. Hurd for bringing this to our attention. I applaud Patrick and his team for sharing the 2019 results. But remember, we want to pair the 2021 results. And together, that's potent information to build really wonderful, groundbreaking, innovative programs for our young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not sure I can follow that, but I just want to answer your question real quick. I hope the group that analyzes 21, 21 data. I can't say we can do it a lot faster next time, if that's the case. Again, it's unlikely COVID is going to be quite the issue. We've also developed all the, we developed the process, so it's going to be a lot faster and we can sort of, I think we can integrate that a lot better. So I think what you'll see is probably within a month or two of actually collecting the data, we'll be able to turn around the reports in 2021. So you should get those really fast, which would be great. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Madden. We have opened the floor up for questions. I have Jennifer McCosey hand up right now. Ms. McCosey from the West Side District.
And thank you for that presentation. As someone who was engaged in this work, just as a parent before even becoming a school board member, this is part of the, this is what brings you in. You know, parents want to see and community wants to see this data. So my, my questions are, I guess, for pretty much everybody involved. Because this is so important, I believe that community engagement, once again, is so necessary when we bring this together. Good night, baby. I'm sorry, yeah. It's a long night. He's been waiting to say good night. And I'm wondering, Dr. Cash and, and Dr. Williams, do we have the capacity to expand, you know, or collaborate with other departments, particularly like CLRI around, you know, helping to grab this data? I don't know how many people we have that actually work on it. I know of a few people in particular. But you just expressed how important this is, and Dr. Cash, man, I can't. You just fired me up. It's too late to be fired up like this, where you just fired me up around this. And if we can collab, you know, if we, and my question to you, Patrick, is if we were to be able to bring more capacity to collecting the data, would you be able to move things further along? Or is it literally process related?
It's, uh, it's process related for the most part because we want to be collaborative. And we want to get input from everybody, you know, everybody we can, working with the district to make sure that the information we're producing is right for the district, right? And the problem with collaboration is it takes time to do correctly. So that's sort of the case of what it is.
And, and I just want to share that, you know, this is not data that is just owned by Student Support Services. This is data that, you know, we collaborate with the Grants Department on, with CLRI, with Anne Baticelli's department. You know, it's district data. We work with the Associates of School Leadership as they're working with principals, looking at their individual plans. So there's absolutely the opportunity for expanded collaboration because what we have to do is provide, you know, training and support to the principals so that they can work with their school-based management teams, you know, work with their student leadership teams, we work with our inner high group. That's why this data is so valuable, because we really do use it quite a bit.
I would also add to that, that yes, Jennifer, this is an opportunity for us to partner with, with all of the relevant organizations that can help with these issues with our young people. I want to build on the, the good indicators. It's not just dealing with the negative indicators. The good indicators, I want to give more support to the young people to keep those up, keep those behaviors up. And then the ones that kind of pop out at us that, yes, we know we got to do better there, that's a good opportunity for accountability, two ways, two ways. It's not all on the schools, on the schools, on the schools. It's a partnership. It's the bargain. The bargain says, we're going to do this and we're going to commit to this and make sure we give you this and make this happen. But you got to, you got to be in it, too. You have a responsibility, too. So, you know, that one about being shot, stabbed, and beaten, come on, that's not the school. Stop it. Let's get in the community and have some town hall meetings about this gun violence where every other day I'm seeing young people get shot by guns. Getting shot dead. Where are all these critics? You know where they are? There's crickets, not credits. There's crickets.
My follow-up question would be.
We're going to be out talking about that. And the other one is how you talk to your children, how you talk to your children. You know, you want to lift them up, raise them up, have them be strong in who they are, then you got to speak to them with respect. You got to love them and nurture them. One in three is real data. That's 33% of our kids being sworn at, cursed at, talked down to, and belittled. That's what that data just said. Everybody has a piece of this.
So my follow-up question would be.
We'll do it.
I love how you just fired up. This is awesome. My follow-up question is, is it possible now that this data was, was put out there that we can get some sort of kind of one-pager bullet points around this so we can promote, you know, not only the importance of the data, but the good points? As we said, like, we have to get out into the community and really engage our community members, our organizations, and folks to really also look for these indicators to help us achieve this, you know, looking for this data and helping out. I'm just, I was fired up about this years ago and it's, you know, I know a lot of people have been putting hard work into this. You know, my win, people, I'll win folks like that, just, I just want to make sure that we all do what we can, we see how important this is, and it's so necessary for our students. That's a huge point, you know, 33% of our kids are dealing with this. So what are we going to do, you know, to, to? It's not just about helping people, it's just to create that awareness and making sure that, you know, we do our part. That's what we're voted in to do.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So yeah, we're currently working on the reporting deliverables for the project. And as part of that, absolutely, right? So we're going to have like one-pager, really brief synopsises of key points, right? So again, some, something people can digest easily. They don't have time to read big reports. We know that. And that will actually help get out the word. And that could be, like I said, used by partners, used by whoever to sort of disseminate this information, get it out there. And that should be coming very soon. We want to facilitate it however possible. We definitely want to make it as easy as possible for people to understand the data and what's going on and what to do about it. And, and that's what we're here for now, in that way.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Madden. I don't see any more hands raised. So I'm just going to go ahead and say that this is, this is our responsibility, each and every one of us. We've been elected and put in position where we can help address some of these issues. And I think that we really have to take a deep dive. This is, this is my city. This is my town. And as I look at this data, it's very, it's very disheartening to know that at our middle school, we're looking at 15 to 18% of our kids contemplating suicide. And the high schools, it's from 14 to 20% of our children that we're working hard for to educate are contemplating suicide. And then, do all the conditions, Dr. Cash talked about witnessing a violent act, getting shot or stabbed or... But how many of our kids are involved in those, in those acts? Or are persuaded by gangs or, or just things in their neighborhood? And then expect them to come to school, get good grades, educate, do virtual learning and everything, you know, that goes in play to, towards a cohort, to a graduation. And these are the deeper things we have to look at because everything that we work for is based upon what happened. Now, I would like to see this board actually take this information, go to the common council because this, these problems are bigger than just the Buffalo Public Schools. And I would like to take this to the council and present it to the council because help might come from everywhere. And this is a, this is a situation where we have to look out, reach out to our counterparts, you know, that's in office, that make rules and, and work with our police departments and, and job training programs and, and work with schooling. And, and reach out, see what we can do about these problems because everything, everything that happens comes back into our classrooms. When a child brother gets into a gang fight with another, another guy, that child comes to school, he's scared because that brother friends go, go to that school and he's scared of his life to go sit in a classroom or go, go to school because those problems from the streets come right back into our buildings. As an educator, I've dealt with it. Our teachers are dealing with it. And, and it's inside our building, the students are dealing with, with these issues. And as a school district, our job is to educate, but we doing everything else trying to, trying to look at the health and wellness of our kids and, and, and educate the, all the way to the parents, the CTE programs and grandparents. So we try and do everything, and I think most of this problem is, is the city problem. So if we can get together, get, get a, get, get a group together that we can actually go present over to the common council with these findings. And, and let's, let's make this a bigger forum, like you said, Dr. Cash, about getting, going to the community and getting forums together. Yeah, let's report the good and the bad that's in this report.
Right.
And move forward with this.
Well stated. What percentage of people participating on this meeting have to go to the bathroom right now? Any more comments, colleagues? I got to go.
And that, we can bring this back up again next week to talk about this data next week. Now, I'm going to conclude the Education Support Committee meeting. All hearts and minds are clear. Go to the bathroom, grab some knee.
There you go.
Good night, everyone. Be safe.
And once again, once again, I apologize, Mr. Madden, about coming on so late. We really tried to, tried to push the agenda forward and have you wait this late. And I hope that nothing like this happens again.
No, I learned a ton about the school systems, the school district today, so thank you very much. It's great, and I'm happy to do it.